All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. So, welcome, everybody. This is our workshop. We have our official meeting starting at seven o'clock. So, as Vice Chair, this is my last duty to do this workshop, and then we'll start the next meeting and select a new chair and Vice Chair. Please don't nominate me, anybody. Please, as I, like, I'm good. I've done it, been there, done that. So, we are about to dig into our next conversation on growth. So, this is a second part of a two-part series. We had in October, our first session, which was really around looking backwards, going back as far as 1964, to understand all the different choices that were made by councils in the town in the past that got us to where we are. Today's conversation is gonna start the conversation about where do we want to go from here. And so, Town Staff has done an excellent job looking at all the different things that the town has done, particularly over the past three to five years, that the town has been doing to try and manage growth and some of the key initiatives that we had underway. And we're not gonna go, if you saw the packet, there's a lot of material in there. It's great material, so I'd encourage everybody to read it. We're not gonna go through all of that detail today. Our Town Planner is gonna kind of give us some highlights, and then hopefully, most of it will be a discussion with the council to, you know, answer some of the key questions that are posed in the deck, so that we can help to formulate certain policy objectives we might want to do going forward. If we have time for public comment, well, we can do public comment before the meeting starts. If it doesn't, we have general public comments, so people are welcome to stick around and share any feedback or questions that they have at our main meeting if we can't do it during this workshop. So with that, I'll just pass it off to Autumn.
Thank you. And I welcome you, Councilor Hayes, and I apologize in advance for the length of this. This is not my normal style. You'll find that I'm typically much more succinct.
Yeah.
I'm seeing the shorter presentations. Um, let me share my screen. So, just to get started, do a really brief recap of what we talked about in October. We went through all of our tools, so to speak, in our development review purview that we have. We talked about our growth management program and what makes up that. And then we talked about those different strategies, and we talked through a case study just to see how our zoning and our comp plan and our impact fees actually real-world application. And essentially, what came out of that conversation is we are using all of the tools that we have right now at our disposal to manage growth, and they all work together very nicely in a cohesive manner. So, these are the topics that we talked about. We talked about the comp plan, zoning, financing tools, our committees and boards, conservation land bond, how that plays into it, the rate of growth ordinance, and then we did discuss how a moratorium could come into play. This is just really for information. I presented this last time. Since, we've added a few more items. Just to give you some history, you know, from 1960 to today, our first comp plan was in 1964. The things that I added had to do with when SETCO was established. There are some contract zones on here now, some residential contract zones, and then also when sanitary district was really brought online. So, just some more information for the public and the council. So, today, we're going to talk about all of our existing plans that we have in place for the last several years and before. We've really spent a lot of focus on developing these plans, the vulnerability assessment we just accepted last month, you all, the open space earlier, the transportation. We have a lot of things that tell us where we should be going and what we should be doing along with the comprehensive plan. So, we're gonna go through those very briefly, and then we're also gonna talk about the state law changes and what those implications might be, and then how really I anticipate those all rolling into one discussion and some questions that I think really need to be discussed before we can come up with a way to address these growth questions, if you will. So, the first forty or so slides really have to do with the comprehensive plan. And I thought it was really would be helpful for you all and the general public to have a very detailed view into all of the recommended strategies and the action items that have been done or are in the works now. And so, that's really why it's so lengthy. It's just for since 2021, when this was adopted, we have these five vision statements, and within each one of those, there is a lot of information, a to-do list. And so, as you go through this for the council and the public, this is really just to let you know where we are with any of these. So, very quickly, you know, guide future land use. There's conversations about what we're, Long Range Planning Committee is currently working on the identity and livability of Scarborough's established neighborhood. So, we are looking at zoning ordinance and talking about design standards. So, these items, we won't go through tonight, but it's just really for information. So, there are several topics in each of these, and so, sea level vulnerabilities is a big one, and we just achieved a greater completing the vulnerability assessment. So, the comp plan is checked off, but when you get to the vulnerability assessment plan, there are lots of things to do. So, that's just how it builds on this. So, Vision Two is really about opportunities for efficient delivery of municipal services and infrastructure. So, this is where you start getting into walkability, growth areas, and again, just quickly going through these. I can see that John is already like, "Don't you dare read that sentence." So, I'm going, I'm going. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them as I go through these, because I know it's a lot. I will just click on to slide forty-five or so, and we'll talk about all of the outstanding things that the comprehensive plan recommendations are outstanding. So, each of the plans has one of these summary slides, and this is essentially what's left to do that's not under works now. And I've categorized them as ordinance updates, additional plans or studies, capital improvement, something to discuss during the budgeting process, and then other. And they're also color-coded. So, when we get to the very end, you can see out of all of the ordinances, you know, where that shows up in all of the towns' plans. So, there's not a lot left for the comp plan, but review home occupation uses and requirements. Sounds very simple, but that could go in several different ways. And so, those questions at the end are really questions that I think that we need additional information, so I can help move this particular ordinance change forward in a different, in one direction or the other. And so, that's really the format of this conversation. And I'll move on from this if you all don't have any questions about the comprehensive plan summary of outstanding items. So, the next one is the open space plan. This one's much more recent. It was accepted in April of this year, and it really was sparked by the council's adoption of the thirty-by-thirty goal. We're at twenty-four percent, so we're making great strides with that. This is a new plan, and there are really five different buckets, if you will, of recommendations. And so, many of these are, you see more blanks under this status, and so, there's a bit more work to do with these. But again, throughout this, we get into overall that same sort of summary slide, ordinance updates. So, we need to review all town ordinances to ensure the definition of open space is consistent. We also have to update ordinances pertaining to conservation subdivisions, impervious surface requirements. So, again, some higher-level ordinance amendments that need to take place, but really need additional information from this body for direction for those ordinance amendments. And then some additional studies and plans. Consider creating an impact fee to fund the purchase of open space. We updated our impact fees last year, and we left a placeholder for this as a possibility, but do we want to move forward with that or not? Consider measures or incentives to reduce the use of pesticides and fertilizers. So, there's still quite a bit of things that we start to see, I think, beefier actions and decisions to be made. So, any questions about this one? Okay. And then we get into the Parks and Facilities Master Plan. This was accepted by council in March 2023. So, it's a little bit older in the realm. This plan has a maintenance and facilities, a very detailed spreadsheet that Community Services uses in their CIP planning and their everyday planning, but it also has some higher-level goals and recommendations, excuse me. And so, again, it really gets into a lot of organizational efficiencies that I think Community Services is really working their way through this. A lot of this is ongoing, need further investigation, but it's really they're making great strides with these things. And then service delivery. Again, there's a few need for further exploration. There's some programming that's included in this. And so, we get to that same sort of summary. And the fantastic thing about this one is that there are no ordinance amendments needed, and that makes me so happy. So, NA for ordinance amendments, but additional studies for plans. Yes, yes, no. Expand recreation programs. So, they have a little bit of different types of things that they're continuing to work through. And then the big one that shows up under capital improvement is community center discussion. So, that one shows up, and addressing our ADA needs in all of our facilities. So, it's a different type of to-do list, if you will. Any questions or discussion on that one? And then we get into the vulnerability assessment, and this is a big one. This one was just accepted last month, and this one is really about addressing sea level rise in our vulnerable areas, and there is a lot of infrastructure decisions and actions that need to be considered and made through this. A lot of CIP impact for these. But again, there are also strategies that are recommended throughout this plan, and we get into subordinate opportunities, how we manage our dune systems, restoration. There's some decisions to be made around that, and most of these are blank. So, this is a lot of work that remains to do. And when we get into the summary for these, we do have some ordinance updates. So, we have to really look at our vulnerable areas and where marshes are expected to migrate, so we have to consider that. Coastal ecosystems, we have to consider some building practices that may or may not be different from what we have. Overlay districts is an opportunity to look at with this project. And then CIP, there's things like putting in gates at high-water crossing, or should we create an alert system? So, there's a lot of things with this plan as well. Any questions about this one? Okay. And we get into transportation assessment, and this was accepted July of this year. So, this is really a baseline, I believe, of where we are with our infrastructure roadways, sidewalk improvements that are needed, a lot of capital improvement planning elements in this plan. There are some guiding principles, again, in this plan and some specific recommendations as well. So, Complete Streets, this is a project that we're in partnership with GP Cog right now that's underway. We had a public workshop just a few weeks ago, but there are, again, those revised town ordinances, my favorite words, show up in this one as well. So, we get into provide safety measures. This has to do with our making sure that when we're increasing capacity, we still want to make sure we're addressing those high-crash level, high-crash locations, and we're implementing the Vision Zero policy that you all recently adopted. So, there's a lot with this one as well. Ordnance updates include transportation design standards, expanding multimodal connectivity. Once we get our complete streets guide in place, really making sure that all of our ordinances implement that. And again, so other implement coordination of traffic signals, just things to consider during CIP planning. So, more work to do. And I will say for the public, on the bottom of each of these slides, there's a little blue link, and you can click on one of those, and it'll take you to our website page. So, if you want more information about the plans or what the current status is. Okay, so any questions about that one? Okay, so that was really quick. So, now we're going to legislative impacts. And there's a lot. So, these are all the LDs that in some form or fashion, we have to do a little bit with. The three that are in bold and in italics are the three that we'll go through for tonight. Most of these are fairly simple things to go through, but if you'd like any more information, feel free to reach out, and I can give you the actual language and the law. So, LD four twenty-seven, this one is parking space minimums for residential units. This one is the one that required compliance in September. We're already tonight, you all have a public hearing and second reading on this. A planning board held their public hearing. This one basically says that you can only require one parking space per residential unit. That's the maximum we can require. We currently have one and a half spaces required for multifamily units, so it does decrease the parking requirements. So, we're in a good shape for this one. I don't anticipate huge impact for this. I think that most developers know generally what they are required. So, a multifamily project is going to provide some extras for guests and whatnot. So, I think that we're generally okay with this. There was also some changes to the off-site parking agreement distance. We already had parking agreement allowances. You could do shared within three hundred feet, but this increases it to a quarter mile, so quite a bit farther. But there is some burden of proof on the applicant that the parking is available and that. And so, again, I don't see that this is a huge impact for us now. And then this one, LD nine ninety-sevens, one really hasn't gotten a lot of attention. It doesn't have to be ready for compliance till 2027, but this one, I think, is almost, I would say it was probably the afterthought. I'm guessing that somebody said, "Oh, well, the towns will just change all their zoning to not allow residential uses." And somebody said, "Well, we'll just say they have to." And so, that's what this one does. It says you have to allow residential uses in all of your commercial zones, not in your industrial areas, but in commercial. We do this in ninety percent of our zones in one form or fashion. We do have three districts, the B two, B three, and BOR will have to add something to, but not a huge lift for this. So, then we get into eighteen twenty-nine.
Is the legislation specific in terms of what type of housing has to be allowed, or is it allow the towns the flexibility?
You have some flexibility, and I believe if I remember correctly, you could even do conditional use. We don't use conditional use. We have special exception, but we could consider doing a conditional use. So, we do have some flexibility with that. Mixed use counts, so that's why we're in pretty good shape on that one. So, eighteen twenty-nine is the big one, that it's really meant to remove housing barriers. It's re, it's meant to increase affordable housing stock throughout the state. It does apply everywhere. Some of the things are more impactful than others. So I've tried to color code, you know, the yellow, orange, and red as we go through these. But there are um several different components to it. It does a lot of things. It touches a lot of laws in one, in one document. So the first set of changes has to do with accessory dwelling units. So LD two thousand and three, you may remember, was really about accessory dwelling units. We were in good shape with that. We already permitted them. We didn't have to do a lot to comply with that. But this changes some fire sprinkler regulations that doesn't affect us. It also says you can have an ADU now even for a multi-unit. So you could have a duplex and an ADU. Owner occupancy is not required anymore. So we do have that in place where you have to have owner occupancy or one or the other. And that, we can't do that anymore, so that'll change. Um, and ADUs are now permitted on non-conforming lots, which in our case is probably maybe a good thing. Because we do have some residential areas that have single-family homes that they are non-conforming lots. Um, and so they could now do an ADU. So I have it in yellow. Um, will no longer be able to require owner occupancy. You can still regulate if you ever choose to in the future, short-term rentals of ADUs. Uh, and we do do that now, so we'll probably keep that. Um, but that's that part. Any questions about that one?
Thank you. Somebody theoretically could have their original house or bought a house specifically for rental. Have either two or three ADUs depending on having public services or not, right? And so they could have up to four units there with um no owner, owner occupancy and I could think that one just concerned me, the amount of density that would lead to and the idea that it could just be a rental business in effect.
Right, and I think the way I understand it is the ADU is a little different from even those four units. The ADU, ADU doesn't count towards your density.
Oh, okay.
So it's even perhaps a little worse.
Each of the four permitted?
No, there's a, there's a limit on, so it, I'll get to that a little bit. It's, and it is a little, it's I, I don't profess to understand everything completely yet, so I'm just gonna say that. It's a learning process. But the number of units you can have on a lot is really significantly different. That's the last one. So th- this one is a big one too. This is the rate of growth ordinance. And so in our first workshop, we talked about how we use the rate of growth ordinance. We updated it in twenty twenty-three. We have the three areas. It's working very well. Um, so this new law basically says you can keep your rate of growth ordinance, but you can only keep it in your rural designation. And so we're really going to be limited um and how we can apply that. And I've reached out, when they changed that, they also did, they did not change how you have to calculate that number. So currently, and so you take your average for the last ten years and you add five percent, and that's what we've been doing. We had a, our biennial report in July. And so you all had that number. Um, and so what I've been told, there's no rulemaking for this happening. What I've been told is we have to apply that big number for the whole municipality to our small area now. So whereas we have Area One right now that has twenty-five, we allocate twenty-five permits per year to all of our RF, R two, R three, R four zoning. Now we would be looking at allocating, you can go over two hundred and, I think, twenty units for RF. So that would be our rate of growth ordinance. Um, still, still getting clarity on that. Um, I'm so yeah, I'm just gonna leave that there.
Yep, can I ask a follow-up? So is the legislation specific in that uh, the rate of growth only applies to rural, as you said? Or is it, if it's not in a designated growth area, but designated something different, that that also would apply? Because when I read the, the rulemaking, they didn't call out rural specifically. They just said it wherever it's a designated growth area. So I'm just trying to
Right.
Understand like the, and that might be more of a follow-up question.
Yeah, the specific language about it, um, I'll be ha, I would be happy to give you that, because it just basically says you cannot apply it in a rural designated growth, it everywhere else. And the way the law works is everywhere else is really a designated growth area. You can, it, that's the tricky part about it. But I think um they did a change here, but they didn't necessarily change the calculation or anything. So I have to get more information on that. So the worst-case scenario is sort of what I outlined. And that's kind of, I'm trying to give you worst-case scenario. So if it gets better, yay.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, to frame the conversation, I don't want to um, lead you down a path that maybe, I would rather take back bad words than
Yeah.
Have to add bad words at the end. Um, so that's a big one. It would really, it limits, it first, it certainly limits our ability to slow growth in our designated growth areas, you know, so all through Route One, the Payne Road Corridor, Higas, all of those are designated growth areas. And the way the law is written, we can't make those not designated growth areas. And so we don't have any um controls over how many permits we issue through this tool.
Sorry, so where there's currently kind of a cap on the number of permits with a five percent increase over the ten-year average? That would entirely go away. In effect, that cap would be gone?
What I've been, eh, for most of, yeah, I added this map in to help us too. Um, and I'll update the one online because this is not included, but this is our conservation and growth map area. And so my understanding is now where it says limited growth areas, so the dark green and the light green. That is where we could still apply a rate of growth ordinance. But we would have to apply the ten-year average for the whole municipality to that area. And then the rest of the town wouldn't have a cap.
Okay, so regardless if the current housing was built in that area, you still have to accept that.
Yes, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's the biggest difference. Our current scheme, if you will, in, in the uh rate of growth ordinance, limited to arbitrarily to twenty-five uh units in the Area One. This now requires us to go to the hundred and five percent in that area, which is the two twenty. So it's, it's a
So it's the full, they did not change the calculation. They changed the where you could do it, but they didn't address the calculation length, which that's really my question.
I mean, I, I think this is a I think it's a gap probably in the legislative thinking that I would, I would hope that we really engage our legislatures to clarify that. Because I would be under the assumption that our rate of growth ordinance would be recalculated so that it applies to the way we've grown in those areas, because we've grown in those areas very deliberately in a, a, a slow way. Because we don't have infrastructure there. So to see two hundred units a year in those green areas is just not to quote you, but I, I saw you, you say it was crazy and it's crazy. And so um I would hope that we continue to get that clarification uh, to, to figure that out or engage our legislatures to help clarify that.
Okay. So then we get into uh the affordable height bonus. So this one requires a one-story height bonus for affordable projects. So there's already a density bonus. LD two thousand and three put into place a two and a half times density if you are affordable project. And so this also allows for a height bonus for that. And most likely probably to allow that density to actually occur in the space is what I'm thinking, that they probably, what they were thinking. Residential lot changes. Um, this one, um, Counselor King talks about what you were talking about. So this one, this one is crazy town to me. Um, I struggle with this one. Um, so basically LD two thousand and three said you could have up to four, uh, or up to three units on one lot. And what we did is we've, we said, okay, you can have an additional unit, but you have to have the same lot area for each. So you essentially are creating, you're subdividing without subdividing. So, okay, great. So we didn't see a run on that. But what this new legislative change has done is it's taken out that loophole, if you will, and then it's added to it. So now your minimum lot size in certain areas is five thousandths. Your maximum minimum lot size is five thousand square feet, and you can have up to four dwelling units on that five thousand square feet. And you only need one parking space for each of the units. So, and we, so we have to figure out on-street park. We have to figure out a lot of things with that, those statements, right? So this one is big. Um, it'll change all of our zoning districts. We'll have to figure out how that works. Planning board changes. This one just takes away planning board ability. So in order to do those four units um on one lot, we would normally, that would require subdivision, but they changed that so you could do the units and it doesn't have to go to planning board. We will have to really make sure that all of our private way ordinances and frontage and all of those things are really um shored up, so we know what we're going to get. Because you'll still have to go through the building permit process, but when you're subdividing these lots without going through subdivision, you basically just go through assessing. And we get, a lot of people come to us first and find out what they can and cannot do. But we will, we will want to make sure that we produce a lot of forward-thinking like FAQ sort of documents for people. So as they go through this, they understand what they need to do. Um, so this one, I still have it in orange. We've been dealing with this a bit already. And so um I think we'll continue to be able to deal with this one. And it also required training within a hundred and eighty days of appointments, and we do a great job of that already. Um, and this one really goes hand in hand with that as well. It's subdivision changes, so it raises the exemption for structures over, you can do the more structures on the lot. So this one is the, the big one, and it's still, this one um is still, some of the things are kind of moving a little bit. So the lot sizes. So if you're in a growth area and you have water and sewer, um the lot sizes can't be over five thousand square feet. So just for context, an acre is forty-three, five sixty. So that's like eight lots per acre and four units per lot. So that gets you at a density of around thirty-four units per acre. And this is statewide required. Um, if
By comparison, like is this room five thousand square feet?
Yeah, it's bigger. No, I think this room is bigger.
Than five thousand?
This room, yeah. No, no, this room is smaller. I'm sorry, sorry. No, the fifty, it's a fifty by hundred is a, is a lot. Um, so if you're in a growth area without water and sewer, that's a twenty thousand square foot minimum. That's what's required by the state for septic systems. And you can have up to four units. And then a non-growth area with water and sewer. So if west of the Turnpike had water and sewer, which we've contemplated that before in our plans, the minimum, maximum, uh, maximum, minimum, how you want to say it, would be five thousand square feet with two units. Um, and the non-growth area without water and sewer, you have to have the twenty thousand square feet for the septic. We can be more restrictive in that area. So that, and this fourth one was not acknowledged in the original law. So it's all rulemaking um context. So the final rulemaking should be done around January. So what I put in your packet is the red line uh rulemaking. It's, so I would encourage you to go through that. And if you have any questions or anything, because a lot of it, the wording is just a little off or some things don't quite make sense. This one is this one and the rate of growth one, but this one more than the rate of growth one is the one I think that's probably the most impactful. Because it's, it's really gonna be hard for us to figure out. I'm, I've been going back and forth with some people at the state trying to figure out how to quantify what our density is. Because we use five units per acre, but if I have to comply with this, my density is so it's kind of out the window any longer. And then we have to really think about what our lot frontage will be. So there's a lot to think about with these.
Autumn, just for, uh, make sure I'm thinking about this correctly, the fourth bullet, this is non-growth area without water and sewer. Uh, currently, generally speaking, our minimum lot size is two acres there.
And, and based on the way I read it, uh, more, every time I read it, I read it a little different. I think we can keep that. I think we can keep it, but we still have to allow three units on it. So I think we can, I think we're in good shape. Um, with that, better than what I thought perhaps yesterday. But again, as I go through these, I'm asking for our attorney to weigh in on a lot. And so these are, you know, there's a lot of moving parts, I think. And, and I know a lot of towns and cities are asking questions, so.
Yeah, we had hoped for clarity with rulemaking, uh, though there were some, there are still, I think is, it's apparent, there's still a lot of questions and ambiguity.
Yeah.
Have we partnered with other towns to sort of, you know, brainstorm and sort of align concerns and then approach it?
We, we have had two opportunities. So Scarborough actually hosted the first one by GP Cog where we pulled together and I think part of the rulemaking, if I, what I saw in some of the rulemaking addressed some of the concerns that were raised in that meeting. Um, and then there was a subsequent meeting facilitated by GP Cog to also get information that Tom participated in. So I think GP Cog is probably for, for our region, the best proponent facilitator. MMA is probably doing something, but they represent everyone. And I think we have more like commonalities with our, our region. Um, personally, I would love to see York County involved with us a little bit, because even though we're part of Cumberland, I think us, Bedford, Saco probably have more in common that we need to, to discuss. So I, I, I think it's a thing we want to continue to, to partner with other, other municipalities on.
So in summary, for that, we have to address Chapter four oh five zoning, four oh six subdivision, and then our rate of growth ordinance. Um, so I'm calling this the to-do list and sort of putting all of these things together. Um, these are all of the recommended ordinance updates from all of the accepted and adopted plans. And then the things that we have to do um to address the law changes.
Autumn, sorry to interrupt, but I think you mentioned, I think you mentioned a number the other night at the planning board meeting. How many ordinance updates are going to be required in connection?
Well, I think I was just playing. I think I said some crazy number. I think I was just being sarcastic.
Okay.
Said like fifty-six or something crazy. Yes, I'm sorry. I was totally, um No, no, it's probably more than that, Corey. No, it was, I was just
Planning board's gonna have to start.
Yes, we were talking about the first one with the parking and they had a lot of changes. I'm like, oh, get ready. The fun's about
Yeah, you made the point that that's probably among the easier ones.
Yes, yes.
Thanks.
Um, yeah, I'll have to find out what that number is and see. I'll keep tally and see how close I got to, I guess. It was pretty high. Uh, so these are all of the things really, and some of these are easy and some of them are huge. Um, so this is just a summary for you all to consider as you move into your goal setting and, you know, further conversations and discussions. These are all of the recommended things uh for ordinance updates, and the colors match up with the plans. And then we have the additional plans and studies, um, the same format again. Um, just all of the things that we have on our list to, to do. And then the capital improvement plan, budget, this, the big ones, community center discussion and a library expansion. Uh, huge, you know, so all lines are not equal weight, I would say on, on these to-do list. Um, and then the other, which is just some other things that we need to work on. A lot of these are more about systems and reporting and tracking different metrics and different information for the town.
Just want to make the point, it, it's daunting when you look at the to-do list. And, you know, much, some of this, a fair amount, I think, can be done at our pace. There's, there are things that we are on deadline. Uh, it'll be twenty-nine, those into effect at the end of June next year. So the, I think we'll have to prioritize some things for compliance. Uh, and then we'll be looking for counsel to give us some direction as to what our other priorities are that we have more control over.
So um, the summary and key takeaways I'll just offer is that we have done a ton of work. I think if you go through the, the spreadsheets that I just sort of clicked through, you can see all of the work that's been happening over the last few years. Um, residential growth is inevitable. We can, we are known Residential growth is inevitable. We can, we are no longer in control of that narrative. Um, but we can control things around it and we can figure out um. How we want things to, to look and function. So we still have control of that, but the growth itself, we can't. Halt it for any sort of permanent time period. And we really, we have a lot more work to do. So when I look at these things and these um. These problems, I can make assumptions. But, and I can make recommendations based on those assumptions, but I'd like. Something that I think um, would be really helpful. To me, understanding and other members of senior staff that are going to have to be addressing all these is really getting some consensus around. Some of these questions that I've put out here. You know, we can do a lot to regulate growth. And really control the narrative a bit more with low impact development standards, which is on our to-do list, but how we do those. Can have different impactful meaning, you know, how we address impervious cover. How we address wetland setbacks, those types of things can really uh, play into the overall picture. Um, expanding our resource protection zone. That's on a list in our vulnerability or open space. That also affects growth. So it's really a full picture of how it all works together. And these questions, I think. Would give us some guidance and some insight into where all you are seeing uh, the direction to go without. You know, uh, without us making assumptions about where we want to go. So that's why I've put those out there. Um, and I think that was what really the intention of the rest of the meeting was to talk about. And I'm really proud of myself because what time is it?
And you've got a lot of work to do.
Maybe on this uh, questions and to-do list, I think we also need to have some um. Focus on prioritizing cost of these things. And whether that's coming through the, the normal budgeting process or whatever, but. Certainly some are going to be prioritized for timing, but I think also we need to be trying to have some level of cost impact. My understanding is there's, there's no financial aid from the state um, for the impacts of this as far as. Public services or schools or, or anything. So I, I think we need to be thoughtful about it as we're looking forward.
Great point.
So we have these questions to guide us, but again, I think now we're at the point for just open. General discussion based on what Autumn shared and really to kind of signal some direction to staff in terms of. Where we as a body want to focus. And again, I don't think we'll get to consensus tonight. It's really an opportunity for everybody to share. I think what's top of mind for you, what do you want to make sure we focus on? And as we continue the conversation and get closer to goal setting, I think hopefully that's where we converge a little bit more on. The focus that we want to have as a, as a body going into twenty twenty-six. So really, I think. This is for, for the council to share what's top of mind. You know, there's a lot of great information that's provided to us in terms of where we could go. Clearly, we can't do everything. Um, and, and we, we really, really need to focus. I'm the worst. Culprit, I think, when it comes to our goal setting in terms of trying to do too much. And so I, I would just encourage us to really try hard. Um, because this in and of itself. And, and trying to pick a couple of things I think are probably enough for this council to tackle, knowing that. There's significant compliance work that we have to work on. So with that, um, does anybody kind of want to kick it off with either? Your thoughts, your priorities, questions? Again, these questions can guide us.
Clarifying question first, because I know L D eighteen twenty-nine was saying towns cannot restrict growth in residential growth, okay? But if I live in a subdivision with covenants that says this is a private subdivision that is single family, is that?
Those, no, those still apply. So those, we, we, the town don't enforce those, but if they exist and they're recorded, they still.
Okay, so like all the subdivisions, I'm thinking of west of the turnpike, those will not be suddenly turned into like. They have to stay that way because they're all.
If they are under those covenants.
And then I think, I don't want to dive into it, but I think one of the tools we had talked about was a conservation overlay. But that's, and I didn't know if that's something that would only be something that we can do in the residential.
You can do that throughout.
So you can do that throughout. And what would the impact of that be?
It's hard to say without knowing exactly. You would have to look at your vulnerable areas. If you were doing it, it depends on how you were doing it. You know, like what you're conserving and if you're using it for coastal areas or you're using it for resource protection areas. If you want to expand that, so.
So maybe coming out of the vulnerability assessment, we could say, okay, we want to have a conservation overlay.
An additional study that would have to occur.
Those are my questions.
Anyone? I have John Anderson's top ten things to do, so I'm happy to do.
Question for Autumn and this is in, I think this is kind of in an anecdotal direction. Based on the, the inquiries that you get from prospective developers. And just your general sense of things and ebb and flow. Of, of development applications based on our rate of growth ordinance and building permits that are available over. Given a period of time and there are obviously different economic cycles. And I'm kind of putting you on the spot and this is like maybe a gut feeling thing, but do you have the sense that there are, there's a lot of pent up demand out there that there? Are people just waiting to barge in and, and max out based on these changes? Maybe that's not a fair question, but I, I think, I think there's a, there's kind of a underlying assumption among some, some of us that there's. That there, that, that we're just barely holding the, holding the gates.
So. To answer your question and I'll, I'll try to be as open as possible. I'm from away. And I'm from away in an area that twenty-five years ago looked even more rural than this area. But there's zoning in place and there is demand. There are people wanting to be there. And in twenty-five years, it's a completely different uh, look and feel and. Insane at the amount of development. And it's all based on production builders. And one thing that I think is really interesting about main production builders really aren't here yet. You don't have D R Horton, David Weakly, Syntex, all of those. You don't have those builders here. And your rate of growth ordinance, what I thought from being away and from working in a lot of larger cities in Texas, like this is really weird. Oh, it's keeping production builders away is what you've achieved with this. How interesting. I live here now. I like this. You, you lose that. And so I feel like. While it may not be immediate, the word will get out. And you will not only have your local builders and your, your main folks and every once in a while you get the Massachusetts. People that I think, once you get production building in. You'll be amazed at how fast it goes. I've shared with um. Tom and Liam, just a Google Earth timeline imagery. And it's, those are seventy-five hundred square foot lots. And it, it can happen really fast. So. And I do get calls weekly about Scarborough need more homes? Do we need more apartments? Where should we put apartments? Um, so I've had that conversation yesterday with someone. Um, so that happens a lot. There's a lot of, a lot of interest.
Okay, yeah, thanks for sharing that.
Uh, yeah, I, I have a question around um. Standing still to some degree is um, to the point earlier about um, coordinating with other municipalities. Is there? And I, I don't have a plan forward on it, but it's kind of like, should we work on just not accepting this in the form it's in? And is there a concentrated or coordinated way to do that where, where, we're working with our. State representatives to, to try to um, impact it at the state level rather than kind of saying, well. All right, we don't have much we can do about this. And, and I think that's probably true. But um, is there a way we can at least be a thorn or a advocate at the state level um, to? To try to. Solve some of the crazy town part of it.
One of, I know Wyndham as an example, and it could be something that this body chooses to do. Did a proclamation kind of airing their discontent. And so. I think that's an action we as a body could take if, if that's the consensus of the council to take a really hard. Thorny stance. And so it's really up to us whether we want to do that. I think from our. Meetings with GP Cog, again, there was a, 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 the, I don't think the appetite at the time was a. A repeal and replace perspective, because I think everybody was like, let's wait to see what happens in rulemaking. I, I would be interested as we've learned to maybe revisit that. And again, it would really be up. To us and to other communities to, to do something. And again, it's not impossible for the state to make a law. Learn they made a mistake and then fix it like they did unfortunately with the senior tax program, which again. Was actually a helpful thing, but un- unfortunately they, they pulled back there. So again, I think it's, it's up to this body to decide. Whether we want to, how we want to um, push back or do something. Uh, sorry, Michelle, I think Michelle had her hand up and then Corey. Oh, Michelle, go ahead.
Good information. Couple of things. Um, I've already talked to one of our reps um, two days ago for about an hour. So started a conversation there. So I think that we can do some of the things that this group submitted to. Um. I'm also wondering if folks in Augusta actually did any modeling to understand the impact of their decision. Because I take a look at like, we just approved a new school, which is great. And.
Oh, thank you. Um, so we approved a new school and then, you know, we're finally maybe ahead of that. Um, you know, game we've been chasing forever. And then if you take a look at this and the infrastructure and the schools and roads and everything else. And if the state's not going to contribute to funding, like we already have a school funding issue. So I think there's a whole case study that could be, you know, developed. Um, certainly with our group, but I think across towns and presented. So just, you know, I don't know if you know if they've done any of that kind of work. It just, I, I, this felt arbitrary to me, which I brought up with a person I spoke to. And I, it felt like it came out of nowhere and. I'm not sure if that's true, but it felt that way.
I, I, I will say to, to um, maybe not an exact effort, but a parallel effort that's happening at the state level. That we're lucky to have both our attorney and our current assessor participate in is a um, forum on. You know, how can we reduce the burden of property taxes? And in that, there might be some solutions that could potentially come forward that could help. With funding for things like schools and stuff like that. So it's not an exact solution to the problem, but it's a parallel. Activity that we're lucky to have two people close to Scarborough participating in and hopefully at some point they will come and share that with. Us in terms of what they're doing to, you know, hopefully there's other advocacy opportunities for us. I think. What's been unique about Scarborough and my perspective, and we started to have this conversation a little bit last council was. We've been pretty insulated in how we've worked. And now maybe the time to like work more with our state partners. And really. That might be a bigger focus. It may be less about the ordinances we want to create and more about the advocacy that we need to. To do for some of these things that will help us.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to show up and be heard. I feel, I mean. I don't think we want to willingly just say, oh, this happened and we're a victim.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts?
Just, I, I'll share my experience uh, talking with a bill sponsor. Um, though this did seem to come out of nowhere. It clearly is built on the shoulders of L D two thousand and three. So this has been a multi-year effort. Um, I will say it's kind of the breadth and the depth of this, I think caught a lot of people by surprise. Initially, our state advocacy organization MMA pushed back on the very simple home rule position, like. Who are you to tell, state to tell us what is good for us? Uh, clearly that didn't resonate with the legislature. In my conversations with the bill sponsor who is Speaker Fecto. I think he continues to be quite proud of the work that he accomplished, the, the larger policy objectives. As part of that though, I think he recognizes that there might be some things so that, that could improve it. So an outright repeal, I think, at least um, will be, I think will be very difficult, but maybe some fix-up legislation. And I think some of the work Autumn's doing now and the questions he's asking might. Might give us indications, what are those kind of fix-up or further clarifications that need to be made? So there will be a short session coming up this spring. So I think there'll be a, a fairly, uh, there'll, there'll be an opportunity coming right up this, this spring. So. Uh, we should take advantage of that and see if we can get our legislative delegation to get on board.
Counsel, hellos?
Thank you. Just to build on what Tom said, you know, as, as you all know, I'm sort of from the dark side. Uh, my day job is in, in multifamily development. And I can say that um. You know, this type of legislation is often advocated for by the, you know, the industry organizations. That um, include various, various types of developers. Um, I myself was not involved in any advocacy on this. Um, but just on the theme of not coming from nowhere, I mean, it's, there, there, there have been ongoing conversations over the last few years about. What the state can do, and there are other states that are doing this as well, what the state can do to. Try to incentivize and frankly, in some cases, just. You know, force, for lack of a better word, uh, force communities to accept um, certain development patterns that they might not otherwise accept. Because there has been a, a long history of some communities utilizing zoning in an exclusionary way. In order to try to, and sometimes, you know, unfortunately going, going back through, through history, some of it has had a racial component. Certainly socioeconomic component to it. Um, and so using zoning as a discrimination tool. Um, I think Scarborough rightfully and, and, and Representative Fecto has said this, Scarborough's been among. The more progressive um, communities in fostering uh, various forms of housing development, including multifamily. So I think that gets to part of, and it's been voiced before and it was discussed at the GP Cog um, event back in Au- back in August that. The one-size-fits-all approach does seem problematic and the hope is that there's some. There can be some recognition of what communities like Scarborough have already done. So um, I know, uh, you know, Michelle, you mentioned talking to one of the, one of our state reps, excuse me, and. John, you had talked in the past and you alluded to it earlier about trying to facilitate some discussions with, with our state representatives. I don't know if there's been. Any more, any more movement on that, but that's something that I would definitely support.
Yeah, I think we did, uh, Speaker Fecto did actually offer at some point to come to Scarborough and have a conversation. I think it was once where. Maybe a little informed, I, we're at that point where we're informed, it would be great. To have the author and sponsor of this to come and really hear with our state delegation. So hopefully that is an action that we can. Do in the future to get them to come and hear our concerns and especially if there's a legislative session in the spring. We can use that as an opportunity to ask specifically for certain um, legislative considerations that we would like to see.
Well, it feels like we shouldn't be penalized for being an A-plus student.
Yeah, well, and, and unfortunately, like, while, while. You know, that Scarborough quote by Speaker Fecto. Continues to occur, the reality is, is this legislation, in my opinion. Is ultimately gonna hurt Scarborough and the people who have been helping the most, the most. And so, while, while it's nice to think that towns like Buxton and others are gonna help out with growth. Scarborough is a beautiful community. It's, it's a hot commodity that people want to live in, as we've all seen. And so when developers, those, those ones you mentioned are going to be looking for places to go. The first place they're going to come is places like Scarborough. So it's not actually helpful for us and, you know. As, as our planner said, not to quote her, this is crazy town. And, you know, they created a situation, I think, that. If the council is willing, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to get a little rowdy if that's what we have to do to, to ultimately be heard and make sure. That we can do it, not because I'm against housing, but because. There's a real need to do this thoughtfully, methodically, and I think what's in front of us. Really doesn't allow us to do our jobs, the town to do their job. And that's just not right.
Going with that too, it's just, I have a really hard time with unfunded mandates in general. And I know they're perfectly common, they happen all the time and there's, and uh, particularly around education. And um, but I, I think to your point, John, that I, I didn't mean necessarily that would be out, you know, trying to tear the law down. It, I meant more like, exactly what you described. What are the things we could do um, to make our voice heard? I do think it's more powerful if we have more communities with us. And um, and I do want to try to hold some urgency against it because. Although it's um, the law goes, the, the, those main parts go into effect July first, I think, right? And so that is a short timeframe to actually impact anything. And for a lot of that time, the legislature is not in session either.
And so that is a short timeframe to actually impact anything. And for a lot of that time, the legislature is not in session either. So um, I just would want to keep some urgency against whatever the um target or goals that we come up with.
Okay, can I share my top ten now?
Yeah.
That I put together. So I I just want to share the things that resonated with me and maybe some things that weren't in the packet that maybe for consideration and maybe it'll drive more discussion while we have some time. So uh, I think it's super important and Autumn mentioned that we im- implement those low-impact development standards. I know that's something that's in process. I would like to see that prioritized and go faster. Essentially, what that does is if there are, if there is more development in Scarborough, this will allow to us to ensure, and Angela can correct me if I'm wrong, making sure that we're following best practices that hopefully have the least impact on our environment. Um, we know in Scarborough, the marsh is super, super important. And if for some reason, this this law goes into effect as it is in its worst-case scenario, we need to do what we can to make sure that we have those standards in our ordinances. Um, for traffic, uh, it's not, it's not in there, but it's been something that we've talked about in terms of we really need to just pick and prioritize the key infrastructure issues that we want to address. Payne Road is the one that I'm always hearing. Um, we have impact fees to address it. I would be willing to be a little bit bold, which we don't typically do, and um try and bring these things to voters to vote on because they're expensive to see if they want to start to move forward with these improvements faster. So the Payne Road improvements, as an example, I think around twenty million dollars. So I wouldn't be comfortable as a council, even though we have the authority to advance that unilaterally. I would, if the voters want to move these things forward faster, I would be comfortable asking them to say are these projects the right projects that we want to advance sooner rather than later? Because otherwise, we could wait for twenty years before those go into effect. And if this growth is coming, I'd rather be proactive and ask voters for permission to spend money. I know we just got a school pass, so this isn't a small ask. And I I wouldn't be surprised if people voted no because of that. But at least giving them the option um to to decide and help us move some of these big, important infrastructure projects forward. For growth, I don't know if we can do this. Um, it's still fuzzy to me in the law, but I, if if we can, and I think this is was Counselor Shoup's um suggestion before was can we change our designated growth areas through our comp plan process to ultimately really focus in my mind, at least on area two, to be very clear on what we want uh, that to be, that would hopefully, if we we can say that is our designated growth area in some pockets and be more specific on like a map, does that help a little bit? And I I based on what you said about rural and all of that, I just, I don't know if that's feasible, but I'd like to explore that further. Um, another thing I would like to explore, and we talked about this in the Housing Alliance, was look into expanding our inclusionary zoning requirements. Right now, the Downs is the only place that we require inclusionary zoning, which basically um requires a certain amount of affordable housing to be built. Uh, I I I recall um Counselor, uh newly Counselor Hayes, who I'm so sorry that I forgot to welcome you when I opened things. Um, you had mentioned about the apartments on Lussey and how their their um market rate. And so to me, I think in retrospect, it would have been nice to say, well, you're required at least to have ten, twenty percent of those apartments as affordable housing. And so I know there's pros and cons to that. I'm sure Cory can tell me why it's a bad idea or Tom or somebody. But I think it's important that if we are gonna grow, that while we definitely want to make room for market rate, we should be very considerate and deliberate about um inclusionary zoning and how we can ensure that we can bring in more affordable options, not just for apartments, but single-family developments or anything like that. Um, I'd love to see us more deliberately accelerate the work around the land bond to purchase and conserve land for conservation and recreation purposes. Um, we have the money that the voters asked for. Uh, we tend, we have a great partnership with the Scarborough Land Trust. I'd love to see us spend that money and get that land as quickly as we can. Um, so that way at least it freezes it up from from new development. Uh, as for resiliency, I think it, and this goes back to what you were saying, Counselor Shoup, I would support us doing more to look at specifically with the vulnerability assessment where we can maybe make some zoning changes to try and help with um making sure that there's not new development in those high-risk areas as as best as we can or limited, and however we can with the tools that we have. Uh, I think we need to update our stormwater management requirements and buffers in key areas, expand the RP zone. Those were recommendations that were in there that I think we should prioritize and expedite. Um, we've talked about this. It wasn't in the list about a pre- tree protection ordinance uh for new development. Again, if this new development is coming, let's figure out how we protect as many trees as we can in Scarborough so that they're not just all disappearing. I'm I'm still thinking of the image that you shared about that farmland where there were no trees uh when that new that development came in. And so whatever we can do to protect our trees would be important to me. Um, one of the recommendations in here was assessing public safety capacity to support growth. I'm not super worried about this because I saw, you know, we recently hired ten firefighters. I know we finally expanded the the police department so that they can do a third shift in our budget. So I think we're good right now, but with this all coming, are, how long are we gonna be good? Or where's that that weak point where we need to invest more in our public safety? I think that's a worthy area to do some work. Um, we need to go after these legislative changes. Um, I would support doing a proclamation for the council against LD eighteen twenty-nine declaring it crazy town. Um, I think that's something we could consider and do. Um, we've talked a lot about STRs and I know we've had some residents
Yeah.
share some concerns about non-owner occupied STRs. So I think I I would love to put a pin in that and at least see if there's consensus to do something there. Um, again, that's that's part of my concern is we want these um developments to be residents. And so figuring out how we limit owner-occupied STR so that we don't see a a a a bunch of those pop up throughout town. Um, and then lastly, I, you know, I, given the situation we're in, the uncertainty, the work to be done, I would be supportive of some sort of moratorium in the near term. Uh, my 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 thoughts are mostly in the area two area where I think there's a lot of work to be done. That is where a lot of our infrastructure challenges are. I think a lot of the feedback we've heard from residents when it's certain developments all tend to be in area two, especially when we're talking large-scale developments. I don't want to stop anybody who has a single lot from selling a single lot that they want to want to have. But um, I think we have some work to do and I think we need to take a breath where we can. I want to be deliberate about it. I don't want to just do it um arbitrarily. So that's something I would want to really have a deeper discussion with this council on is is there appetite for something like that? And then as we go into next year, I think, again, with everything that's happening, we should just make it a goal to have no TIF, CEAs or contract zones until we make significant progress on a lot of this work, at least for the next year. So I knew that was a lot. Um, but I just wanted to put that out because these are the things that are at least, as I looked at everything or have been thinking about it, this is things that I would feel passionate and supportive about. And I I hope to hear from you guys, some of those specifics as well as we work through this to really land on, maybe it's not all ten, eleven of these, but
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Like I said, we need to focus, but um, these are the things that I feel are doable within our control. Even if LD eighteen twenty-nine continues, these are still practical things that we can try and prioritize and advance. Please stay autumn. Please don't leave Scarborough. This is what we do. Any, any thoughts?
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like basically the state is trying to fix something. And in doing so, they're gonna, it sounds like they're gonna make it worse. Uh, basically, they, what they want, and they've been saying, the government's been saying, that they want to make affordable housing. And they want people, and we all do. We all, you know, but in doing this, it seems like they're just opening it up. And you're not gonna have affordable housing, because if you just open it up, then it's gonna be the high end. And they'll be able to build whatever they want. And they're gonna take it all up. And the developers want to do the high end because that's where the money is. And uh, so I I I don't know. They somehow have to, you know, uh loosen the restraints, you know, on the town and say that you have to have affordable housing and actually make it stricter for she was saying about these developers self here. I mean, you know, if you'd let them in and it's kind of massive. And again, I've said it many times that, you know, we keep talking about, you know, apartment buildings. And I think that there should be, you know, single-family homes, or at least tiny houses, you know, maybe not quote tiny houses on a trailer, but you know, a small house that's affordable for young people starting out. And that's what we have to focus on. That's what the state should be focusing on. And that's what we need to relay back to the state and say, you know, this is, this is gonna take us down the wrong path. You know, from what you really want. And I don't think they really realize that, but if we somehow can get that across to them and like you said, have some fixer legislation or something, that's what we really need to focus on.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Counselor, fellows, you had your hand up?
Oh, um. Thank you. Um, I guess, well, you know, there's the baker's dozen, which is thirteen. I guess John's top ten is fourteen. But I I knew we could count on you to kind of get us, get us rolling. Um, I think there was a lot of good stuff in your list. And I also agree with with what you said earlier. Uh, and I think others have commented on this too, that as we move into our council goal-setting for this new council year, um, I think less is better in terms of, you know, number of goals and really being very focused. And um you know, it was alluded to earlier, but I think we're fortunate. We sort of have the school thing. There's a lot of work yet to do to implement that, but at least it's not sort of hanging over us. We know what it's going to be. Um, we know we're not dealing with a new school site somewhere that's gonna gonna factor into some of this thinking. So and and I I agreed with with a lot of your items. Um, for the record, I I would definitely favor inclusionary zoning uh and affordability requirements. And part of that is to harness what what Autumn was talking about, that, you know, that folks want to be here, are gonna want to be here that badly. Um, that's a relatively easy thing to kind of harness. I think it's been, it's been harder in the past when we've been talking about kind of one-off developments, a few units here, a few units there. And I'm not in any way advocating for supporting, you know, production-level massive-scale development um along the lines of what I was describing. But I think to the extent that there is this innate desire to be in Scarborough, I'm all for harnessing that. And then similarly, another thing that I've heard from from folks, um, including a couple of people I talked to on election day when just staying there at the table uh outside the voting place was um, as new developments come in, looking at ways that we might um, require some amount of green space in in even in sub, even in small subdivisions. That's a recurring thing that I've heard is that there are very few places for kids to play, um, people to take their dogs and things like that. And I want to get it control ordinance, that's strike that. Um, but I think that's another thing that we we can sort of, you know, we we have, we have the ability to incentivize those things when there's that much demand to be in Scarborough. Um, in terms of a, in terms of a moratorium, you know, I'm, my, my gut reaction is always sort of very, to be very wary of that. I mean, I think, I think there's maybe in a, maybe a premise out there that it's inherently conservative to slow things down. But um, if you're a property owner, that's, that could be a pretty radical thing to be told that you can't do anything with your property over over a period of time. So it's something, you know, I agree. And I think this is what you were saying, John, that not something that we would want to take lightly, but I think, you know, this is an extraordinary set of circumstances with the state legislation. Um, and so I'm open-minded about that. And I and I I would consider it if it were very clearly defined in terms of, I mean, it has to be by law, it has to be clearly defined in terms of duration, but also have a very clear um, set of of objectives that we're that we're working to to achieve. And that it's not just kind of kicking the can down the road. I mean, I think there could be an element of buying us time as we see how these things play out with eighteen twenty-nine, but there has to be more to it than that. So.
Yep. Thanks. Counselor Shoup and then Counselor Kane?
I first had a question because I know, I think you were saying that under LD eighteen twenty-nine, we can't change the zones. Can we change them now? So like, I know, like when we were talking about Dunston, I was like, can we do a moratorium on Dunston while we evaluate maybe how we want to move forward? Is like, can we change zones like up into a certain point?
So what I was saying is, I think that the idea, they were probably thinking, oh, towns will just say, oh, we don't allow residential and and only in these areas. And that was their way of preventing that from happening. But yeah, you can make changes to your zoning districts um, now. Um, you certainly can.
Without a tool we could do is we could maybe redesignate some places that was so to prevent.
You could um, address density factors. Um, density factors sort of double your allowed density. Uh, so yeah, you could do some things like that now or in the future. I I envision we're I've, when I got here, I'm like, oh, we need a unified development code. Like, now's your chance, Autumn. You have to rewrite everything. Um, so yeah, you could definitely look at that. Can I show you the sample of what I showed them before? And I think
Hold on to your chairs.
Um, hopefully it'll, you'll be able to see it on the screen. Well, it's very dark. It's a Google Earth image. Um, so let's do this. So what we're gonna focus on is this little, this is in nineteen ninety-seven. We're focusing on this little area. And you can see all of the parcels around are relatively empty farmland.
Just for context, where are we here?
We're in Texas. Oh, we're not in Maine. We're in Texas and you're not in Kansas anymore. Um, so this is a very, a very rural community in nineteen ninety-seven, very low population. Uh, but prime farmland um in this whole area. So in twenty-ten, you start to see the, so you can see the, this is really where everything's at. And then in twenty-ten, and then we move to um twenty-twenty and then twenty-twenty-five. So twenty-eight years. And then this is what a seventy-five-hundred-foot lot subdivision looks like. So this, and this, these are not five thousand square foot lots. This is seventy-five-hundred-square-foot lot. And these are the prices. There are six hundred homes for sale today in this general area, and they're all three hundred to four hundred. Um, my issue as a, as a planner, I mean, this is my profession and I've worked at other places. The issue I see with this legislation, and I completely agree with the requ- the desire to um create affordable housing. There's nothing in any of this language that requires affordable housing. There are some assumptions being made that developers will provide affordable housing. And because of quantity, we will in turn have affordable housing. Um, that assumption, I believe, is really what is the ultimate fault with this legislation. Um, if the state really wanted to be impactful, create, managing a housing alliance is hard work. Um, we don't have that. Create a statewide housing alliance program and institute an inclusionary zone program throughout the state and manage it. So that the one-offs, the two-offs, the big projects, you're getting that everywhere. And so you're getting what you really wanted and not completely putting everything on the burden of the the communities. So that's my, that's my two second.
Yeah.
Uh, I would support a proclamation because I think, I think specifically when we did one against the Gorm Connector, I really felt like that also kind of led our neighbors and kind of really got an impact. So I think that is just, especially as Scarborough, one of the fastest-growing municipalities, us just saying, you know, we totally do not support this, I think would be good. Um, I think, I think this situation is the perfect situation for a moratorium as well.
Yeah.
Um, I, Autumn, I forgot to say before, I really appreciate this work and what the rest of the staff put into it as well. It's um it it was very encouraging how much work was already done um by our kind of responsible um, effort to have all these initiatives and and plans. So I think we we have a great starting point for that and I appreciate all that. Um, John, I think to your, to your list, the one maybe that you've left off there is I think there's an opportunity to even look a little more aggressive at impact fees.
Ooh, I'm writing it down.
Um, and uh, we're, we're in the process of doing that right now. I might say we even hold back a little bit. Um, I think we can develop the plan we're already working on, but um, having a conservation impact fee, is that the right term for that on? Um, at, there's, there's ways to do that as well. Uh, I do recognize that that has the adverse effect of those fees tend to get passed on to the home buyers. And so it does
Of those fees tend to get passed on to the home buyers, and so it does raise the price of a house. Kind of double edge there. It makes it less affordable, but might make it less, um. Saleable, uh, if the price is higher compared to the next town over that doesn't have those fees. Um, and the second thing was, um, I'd be in favor of a moratorium to, um, the other points. I think we need to do some work ahead of that. I'd almost wanna maybe hold that in our pocket, because if we're, if we're not making progress. And we can issue a moratorium on June thirtieth, um, that would buy us six more months of work, assuming it would be six months of. What we could do before the impacts of this would be effective.
Any other comments? Counselor Donovan, you've been quiet. Is there anything you wanna add to the conversation?
Well, I did wanna. Thank Autumn for what was an absolutely remarkable presentation. And it, and it did demonstrate the amount of work that has been done. In an attempt to deal with Scarborough, the most desirable place to live in America. And, and that really is the problem. Uh, we have lots of people who are interested in developing property here. Uh, and I liked John's list. I won't go through highs and lows, but I did like, uh, a lot of that. And, uh. I, as I read it and it, I was. I went here to look at it and I got through the first dozen pages and then I had to stop and think about it. Then the next dozen pages, there's a lot in here. Uh, and I, uh, I think our job will be to prioritize. What, what do we wanna push first? What's the plan for that? And, and John's good at that, so, uh, uh, I'm, uh, as well as our staff, which is second to none. So I would like to see us, uh, uh, develop a plan. That gives us guidance and direction and, uh, and ability to move forward intelligently.
So I, I believe, um, this conversation is super helpful, because I, as we, before we go into goal setting. Hopefully staff will have this as well. And this, we, we typically have a staff session. Where they can kind of share what they think their priorities are. So I'm hoping through the discussion tonight, staff is getting at least enough from us. To start to think and share what they think might be a good path forward, as well as we continue to think and hear from the public. As well in terms of what they would like us to, to consider and prioritize. Um, did you have something else, Counselor?
Yeah, basically on her map, you know, down in Texas, it is scary. And if you see how that blew up or was developed, and you know, you. You kind of don't want that here, but you do need, you know, affordable housing. And that situation with those houses lined right up on top of one another. It was small houses, the tiny houses, and it's shocking, but it's either that or big box apartment buildings, you know? Uh, and I think I'd rather have that than the big box apartment buildings. And I think we should have some of that here, because you don't want it all, you know, and you, you won't have a need for it to be all over the town. But you'll have to designate an area to have that type of housing. So that the, again, younger generation can have a starter home that starts out at three hundred, you know? Maybe here it'd be two hundred.
Well, and, and I think this is where Tom's point, we are progressive in the sense that we did that. We have the CPD district, the Downs. Which is really probably more aligned with like, with that image that we showed. And I think that was intentional to have something like that in Scarborough. But what this legislation does is essentially extends that, or actually goes even more, I think, in terms of density than what we even allow in the Downs. And so, um, I think you, you hit the nail on the head that it would be great for other communities to do more like that, but. We, we've done our part.
But the Downs came, it comes down to it is, it really isn't affordable.
That's true.
You know, I mean, it's density. They've got a density, but it's still high-end. It's not, you know, just basic low-end housing for. Young people. And maybe, like you said, the, uh. Like the Beatrice Speedway area, you know, I mean, that would be a spot to do that kind of, instead of, uh, commercial. Do that kind of a development there.
Yep. Great. So we're, we're close to time. I'd like to give us a little bit of break before our next meeting. For those in the public. We have a public comment at our general meeting that you can share your, your thoughts and opinions on this. So welcome. That feedback when we go into our regular meeting. I wanna thank Autumn for, for everything you do and continue to do for our community. Please never leave us.
Thank you.
Unless, of course, you wanna run for governor or something, then based on what you said, I would support that full-heartedly, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll think about that.
Think about it. Just think about it. All right. Thank you, everybody. We'll, we'll come back in, in five minutes.
Can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to our United States of the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all.
Next item on the agenda is swearing in of the newly elected officials. Could I please have Ms. Shoup and Ms. Hayes come up here?
Please raise your right hand. I, please state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Karen Shoup, do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
As long as I shall.
As long as I shall.
Continue a citizen thereof.
Citizen thereof.
I, please state your name, do swear.
I, Karen Hayes.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As a town councillor with the Town of Scarborough.
The Town Council of the Town of Scarborough.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and the laws of the state.
And the Charter of the Town of Scarborough.
And the Charter of the Town of Scarborough.
Thank you. Right, can you start?
Make a photo. Do it slower. Pretend to, there you go. Or you're gonna help out. Okay.
Next item is order number twenty-five dash one twelve, Act on the Nominations of the New Town Council Chair. At this time, I'll open the floor for nominations. Councillor Anderson?
Yes, I would like to nominate Corey Fellows for Chair.
Do we have a second?
Good.
Discussion?
Councillor Shoup. Um, enjoy working with Corey. He runs a great meeting. I know he did a great job at the Planning Board. I just wanted to justify my no vote tonight because just as a, as a resident of Scarborough and we're dealing with a lot of growth, I feel like, you know, nominating a developer personally would not be responsive to kind of the feedback that we've gotten from residents lately. And so I just wanted to, again, I, I, I plan on working with our council, whoever is the Chair, I just wanted to explain my no vote tonight.
Any other discussion?
Yep, uh, so I, I would like to nominate, uh, Councillor Fellows because having been Chair before, I understand what, what the job takes. Um, it takes somebody who can run a great meeting, who's a consensus builder, who works across and listens to other people and takes their opinions. And I think, um, he has all of the qualities that would be a great Chair. I actually view his role as an affordable housing developer as a positive, especially given all the growth discussions that we just had. Um, he's chaired our Planning Board for many years. He understands our zoning. He was on our Long Range Planning Committee. I think if anybody's gonna be at the helm, helping to guide our council who has the experience, um, I think it's him. Um, I, I view what he, he does as a profession as something admirable. Trying to give, um, people without needs or disabilities places to live that are affordable. And a lot of what we talked about was that the state really didn't address affordable affordability and the legislation that they did. And I think we're, we're lucky that we have somebody on the council who can bring that perspective and guide us through what is gonna be likely a pretty tumultuous, challenging situation. And I, I trust that Councillor Fellows has the character and the, um, the ability to do that better than, than all of us. So, thank you, and I hope, I hope everybody votes for you.
Councillor Hayes?
Hi, um, I had similar concerns.
I'll figure this out within three years. Um, I had similar concerns to Karen and, um, Corey and I had a, I don't know, two-hour meeting recently and I, I didn't know him, so a lot of it was just getting to know each other and that was wonderful. And I was very clear with my concerns and asked him a lot of questions um, about his role and, you know, being in housing and being in development. And I felt like he, um, was really transparent and I felt like he was not defensive. And I felt that after having that conversation, that I had less concerns moving forward, but I think I was clear that, you know, I, I, well, my concerns were. So, I appreciated that conversation. I think it helped provide some clarity to me.
Are there any other nominations? None? All those in favor? All those opposed? Vote one. Six one. Congratulations.
All right, thank you very much. Um, moving on to our next item, uh, order number twenty-five dash one-one-three, Act on the Nomination of a New Town Council Vice Chair. Um, do we have, I will, uh, welcome any nominations. I would like to nominate, um, Larry Kane as Vice Chair. Any discussion? John?
I, Larry is like, everybody on this council is amazing, and I think you're all amazing, but Larry is very amazing. Um, I, I was so impressed with what you did on the, uh, School Building Committee as Vice Chair. Um, I think what we need more in our community is somebody like you who really listens to what people have to say. I think you got elected because you are a great listener, a great collaborator. And I think, um, you will, you know, serve this council well as Vice Chair. And I hope that you continue to bring, um, that perspective to try and bring people together and make sure that we're listening to everybody from all sides of the discussion, because that's something I've seen you really care about, especially as we've been on comms together. And so I'm, I'm really looking forward to you and Corey hopefully as a, as a partnership, uh, for the next council.
Any other council comments? Bill?
I didn't know Larry for, uh, it's, uh, time on the council together, but and so kind of sizing up people, that's, I guess, what you're doing. Uh, and when I came away with this impression, works hard, smart, understands the issues, and he's prepared to make a positive contribution in the discussion.
So I'm, um, pleased to see this nomination.
Did you have something?
I did. Um, I met Larry when he was campaigning hard outside the post office one day and asked him a lot of questions. And what's really impressed me is I've watched him in action the last six months and his actions support what he campaigned on, and that was really important to me. So I really respected, um, that he was sort of walking the talk. And then we met, uh, I think a week ago. And, um, I got to know him a lot better and, um, agree with everything Bill said. Just felt like he's passionate and smart and cares and um, is focused on, I think, the items that we need to be focused on as a town right now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Um, I'll just briefly add that, um, I've also been very impressed with Larry and the, uh, time I've gotten to know him over the last few months. We didn't know each other, um, prior to that. Um, I knew Larry, came to know Larry by reputation through his role on S-Back, um, and, you know, playing a, you know, a pretty prominent role in that very diverse group, um, and really showing an ability to, um, first of all, a willingness to really be very prepared and a very strong work ethic. And you dove right in and you, and we're, um, you know, proposing, um, expansion of senior tax, uh, benefits, senior tax credits right out of the gate. Um, and as Michelle said, really honoring what you ran on. And so, um, I look forward to, uh, to working with you and, um, you know, we each only have one vote and, um, uh, but, uh, we can do our part to kind of help steer the ship in, in the positive direction. Okay. Uh, any other, any other council comments? Um, with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Show that to be anonymous. Thank you. Congratulations. All right, now that we're all sworn in and seated, um, we will move on with the rest of the agenda. Um, we will start with the roll call.
Councillor Doherty?
Here.
Councillor Kane?
Here.
Councillor Shoup?
Here.
Councillor Anderson?
Here.
Councillor Donovan?
Yes.
Councillor Hayes?
Here.
Chair Fellows?
Here.
While President.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the, on the agenda is general public comments. This is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. We do provide the opportunity for a public comment for each of our action items. Um, I just ask that if anyone has any comments that are not related to our agenda tonight, to do that at this time, approach the podium, uh, state your name and address, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Don't start the time yet. Great. My name is Mike Doyle. I live in Pleasant, New Hampshire. I own and write for FamaToday.me. I'm gonna make a couple of, uh, quotes here from the, uh, United States Supreme Court. The first one is New York Times Company, three seventy-six U.S. at two seventy. Last time I was here is shouted down by Dan Donovan and taken away in handcuffs. That's not gonna happen tonight unless you guys wanna be sued like you've never been sued before. Even less can it suppress expressions on the ground that the expression uh, is upsetting, offensive, or disagreeable to government officials. Debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open. And it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials. This court, referring to the U.S. Supreme Court, long ago repudiated the doctrine of seditious libel in favor of a theory of our constitution which values free speech is essential to, not subject to the vicissitudes of our political system. A few years ago, I was here at a workshop meeting and Sean Baybine showed up here so drunk he couldn't talk. The excuse that Tom Hall used, that he had a back injury and couldn't get out of the chair, but I was close enough to see that he was drunk out of his mind. Somebody helped Tom Hall get Sean Baybine into his office and his wife came to collect him. Now, this is protecting a drunk driver in Scarborough that should not have been done. I don't care if you're a town councillor or not. He should have been turned over to the police, arrested for driving here drunk and having his wife come and get him. Now, that never happened. He never got arrested. A few years ago, he was arrested for drunk driving. I don't know if it was here or someplace else, but he actually got the ticket for it. And he went through the court system and it was eventually reduced down to uh, driving, uh, impudent, uh, driving or something much greatly reduced from drunk driving. And you get, uh, some kind of a small sentence, you know, uh, probation, a few days in jail, whatever it was. But it was a completely different situation than what it was the night I saw him drunk here. And this is what Tom Hall did. He, he let this guy get away with drunk driving as a councillor in this building. And I saw it in my own eyes. I had a number of people also witness it and talk to me about it later. And one of them said they had helped Tom Hall get him into Tom's office. Now, I don't think anyone here in the town, if they're gonna stop for drunk driving, is that okay? You just get, come over here at the town hall and have Tom Hall, Hall put you in his office and wait for your, your spouse to come and get you? This is something that shouldn't be done. And I condemn Tom Hall for doing it. And he, this is something that, that reflects badly on the town. And I'm not the only person that knows about this. One person moved out of the town because of it. He was so upset by it. So that's my comment on, uh, what I saw here. Sean Baybine uh, is a habitual drunk driver from what I've seen and what I've been told by other people. So, don't protect drunk drivers here or anyplace else in Scarborough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nina McKee, three oh nine Black Point Road. Tom, I love you. Um, so I, you know, I just can't understand how the state can dictate the, and, and limit our ability to control, control our growth. It just is beyond the pale. So I really hope that you guys really, really, really challenge this as best you can. Um, and I just wanna quickly say, and I don't know whether, as, as Rizvera has already, um, instigated, um, LD eighteen twenty-nine, but if you drive down Black Point Road and take a left by Max Millen Church, on the left-hand side, there are ten houses on these little postage-sized pieces of land. They went in there, they took every single tree out. And it's appalling. And the poor houses that were there have houses that are really budding right into their backyards. So, you know, I just can't, I hope we can do something about this. And I hope we can do something about the state. I've never, ever understood why the state can mandate how many units we can have in our town. So, you guys go for it. That's all I can say. We need you. And we've gotta stop this. So, if you need me, I'll get my broom.
Thank you, Nina. Anyone else? I do see that we have a hand raised online, uh, but we'll, we can hear from Jim first.
Jim Pritchard, Maple Ave. On the growth thing, I think this council should be taking a strong lead. Not sitting back, taking a wait and see what other folks do. If the state is gonna come in and start stripping home rule, that's not acceptable. If I heard correctly, that one of the councils, I can't remember who it was, spoke about increase for police and fire. The one department that's most important is your Public Works Department. If we're gonna have development come in and only build for one car, where are the other cars gonna park? In the street? If we get storms like we had in ninety-eight, you're gonna be spending a lot of money removing snow and ice just to clean up where the parked cars are. And what is the total impact to the taxpayer for the state imposing these new laws? We're paying enough in taxes as it is. The legislation doesn't speak of traffic. We have traffic problems now. Are we gonna have additional traffic in our residential areas? Those are some of my concerns. We should be taking, Scarborough should be taking the lead in this part of the state. Have the Speaker come. Have the President of the Senate come. Get the local representative from all the communities. Even if you have to go to Lewiston. Bring them down and let them know how we feel. Sitting back, taking a wait and see is not acceptable. The second issue I'd like to raise is the forestry. Gonna be voting on that sometime. We take and plant a tree in the town's right-of-way. Depending on the tree, the canopy grows out all of the person's house. Who's gonna have the right to say whether or not the limbs should be cut? I know in one city, it's the town. With the forestry, we should be looking at our construction standards. If we're gonna be planting trees in the right-of-way, then we should be looking at putting utilities underground. That's a cost. That was not raised in any of the discussions prior. The third issue I'd like to raise is the traffic calming policy. It is time to take a fresh look at that policy. Last Saturday, I took a walk from my house up Maple, Elmwood, Green Acres, Route One, and down Maple. I got to Maple on Elmwood. There was a woman with a young one on a bicycle with training wheels. They were halfway across the crosswalk. A car come up from one fourteen, never stopped at Elmwood. Took a left and ended up turning in the left lane of Elmwood. We have to look at that. There's been enough studies in that area knowing that there is a safety issue. If I understand the Talks Claim Act, if something happens there, the town is gonna be liable. I don't wanna see any kids, any person hit by a car, killed, or whatever. I know there are members of the administration that are against traffic calming, but something has to be done before somebody gets killed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Avril Hill, Maple Avenue? Good evening, councillors, and welcome, Councillor Hayes. I'm here to address serious concerns with Scarborough's Airbnb policy that was created behind closed doors. Back in twenty seventeen, neighboring towns of South Portland, Portland, and Cape Elizabeth transparently addressed short-term rental zoning. They held public hearings before adopting new zoning and took steps to protect their communities by restricting and/or banning unhoseded Airbnbs in residential districts. During that same year, Scarborough created a short-term rental slash Airbnb policy that states they can occur in any residential district in town, not just at our beaches. That policy was created and implemented as law without public notice, planning board review, committee review, or council involvement. Even during the two-plus years of public discussions for the recently failed registry ordinance here in town, this Airbnb zoning policy was still treated as law. I didn't learn about this policy until the summer, when an unhoseded Airbnb opened near me and I began to ask the town questions. The manager acknowledged in an email to me that the council was not involved in the creation or authorization of this policy. The manager stated that staff consulted with the town attorney and believes the interpretation is consistent with the intent of the ordinance. But private consultation with the attorney is not a substitute for the required public process, nor does it override the council's legislative authority over zoning and policy. And while legal opinions may assist the town, they cannot create an intent that the ordinance never expressed. Our ordinance is very clear. It plainly states, quote, "Any use not specifically allowed as either a permitted use or a special exception in any district shall be considered prohibited in that district," end quote. Airbnbs and short-term rentals are not defined or listed as a permitted use. By allowing them in all districts, the policy authorizes what the ordinance prohibits. The town claims they are residential use, but our ordinance classifies transient guests as lodging use, and lodging is banned in most residential districts. Our ordinance also states that, quote, "The Rules and Policies Committee shall review existing and proposed town council adopted policies," end quote. That never happened. Also of legal concern is that this policy effectively introduced a new zoning use, so its adoption seems to violate state zoning law, which requires public hearing, a public hearing, and proper public notice before any zoning changes are made. Residents are entitled to advance notice of a major land use decision that affects their homes and neighborhoods. Although I have spoken with legal counsel, I remain solution-oriented. I respectfully petition the council to uphold the rule of law and restore transparency by nullifying the unauthorized Airbnb policy and place short-term rental zoning on your next meeting agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's go ahead and take, uh, take the speaker we have online.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, excuse me. Hi, everybody. This is, uh, Matthew Keith, uh, at Eight Pleasant Avenue. Um, first and foremost, um, I wanted to welcome Councillor Hayes and welcome back Councillor Shoup. And, um, congratulate, uh, Chair Fellows and Vice Chair Kane. Um, I think those are, uh, some great nominations and excited to have the new council on board. Um, and I wanted to speak today, uh, about short-term rentals as well and encourage the council to really make this a priority in the coming, uh, period of time. Um, I wanna speak both um, to a personal situation of mine and also like a larger situation from where I'm from. Uh, so on the personal side, when my partner bought the house that we live in, um, it was owned by a ninety-five-year-old legend in the community before she passed. And when her family was selling it, um, my partner ran into some issues during the closing process. And we found out during that time that there was a backup cash offer for an Airbnb. Uh, luckily, the, um, the family of the, um, person who lived here before wanted to prioritize the well-being of, uh, the community and, um, prioritize the well-being of the community and prioritize being able to still be patient and sell it to my partner. But if it wasn't for that like moral stance that they took, could have easily been another Airbnb in the community, and I probably wouldn't be in Scarborough and wouldn't be an active part of the town that I've come to grow and love. So, just a personal example of sort of the cost when, you know, we allow Airbnbs to be anywhere and everywhere. I want to be clear that, you know, I really want to open this up to a larger discussion eventually. My personal stance is that owner-occupied makes some sense, but non-owner-occupied is sort of more where I see the problem. And this transitions to what I have seen in Hawaii, where I come from, where they have eliminated non-owner-occupied Airbnbs everywhere but Honolulu, which is the tourist area, which would sort of be our equivalent to the beach area, which, you know, would make sense to maybe leave that as well. And when I go home to visit family, I'm really actually disappointed that I can't get an Airbnb and be near my family. Makes things a lot more difficult for me in that way. But it has opened up a ton of housing and made for some more affordable housing that didn't exist before in an area in Hawaii that is really struggling. So, I've seen the really positive impact that that can have. And I just want to encourage the council to really make this a focus of the next time period going forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Matthew. All right, we'll go back to the podium.
Hi, Stannis Moody Roberts, 38 County Road. Thank you, Autumn, for such a comprehensive and amazing presentation. I missed the middle of it when I was on my drive here, but I'm looking forward to catching But there's a really depressing statistic. In the past 50 years, our country has grown tremendously. Our GDP per capita, when adjusted for inflation, is, has tripled. So, as a country as a whole, we're three times as wealthy as we were 50 years ago. The average wage, when adjusted for inflation and by purchasing power, now is actually lower than it was 50 years ago. So, the generation coming up is facing worse circumstances than their grandparents were in 1970 when it comes to having a, an affordable life. And nowhere is that more apparent than the housing market. And in a way, Scarborough is kind of a microcosm of that inequality where, as well-meaning as we probably have been in the past, our, our growth has largely accrued to a, a very tiny minority, to, to the, the largest developers. And there's tremendous amount of wealth in development, as we all know, which is why we're facing such developmental pressure. And it is somewhat frustrating that we've basically put all our eggs into, most of our eggs into a single basket with, with one developer in particular, with the Downs. And not only that, but we're subsidizing them by giving back, I think, $80 million in, in taxes to them to incentivize that growth. And so, as problematic as LD 1829 is, there's a side to it that is actually quite great in that it allows any resident now to build an in-law apartment if they wanted to on their property, to give their children maybe a place to live, or for a generation to move in and allow a house to open up to the next generation. And Autumn was spot-on where one of the most problematic aspects of it is that it doesn't limit growth to purely affordable housing, but that is an important part of that law that is actually quite good. I'm running out of time, but I just want to really say what Avril said struck me particularly as it's such low-hanging fruit for us when it comes to affordable housing. It's existing housing stock that is there and is taken away from our community and locked up with an investment, those Airbnbs. And I have two immediate neighbors of mine that in the past five years, they're the only affordable housing in our section of, of street that's been on the market, and both were purchased and are converted into Airbnbs. And that, that's so detrimental to a neighborhood. You lose that, your community, you, you lose, you lose that neighborly feel when a, a neighbor's house becomes a revolving door. And regardless, regardless of the kind of legal ease or whatnot, I am certain that it was never the intention in our zoning to allow lodging, short-term rentals in our residential neighborhoods. And you can try to badger with words about how Airbnb technically somehow is a residential use, but it's, it's absolutely not. And it's such a simple thing that we can do to make affordable housing in this community that doesn't require the consequences of growth. So, I, again, just want to repeat, I strongly urge the council to, to visit this issue and, and put in place some restrictions there. Thank you.
Hello, Allison Bristol, 6 Baby U Avenue. I just wanted to respond a little bit to the workshop, which I'll probably respond more in writing. It's very dense. And first, I have to say bravo to Autumn for this presentation, for the previous presentation. Your ability to wrap your arms around intense information and distill it so maybe somebody might understand it is remarkable. So, thank you for that work. I would reiterate what already has been said about not getting, just getting clarification from the state as to what everything means, but to push back and to push back hard. You know, that this is taking away home rule. And, and something that resonated with me was what Councilor Doherty said was, and this is kind of our, what you were saying is that the wealthy would come in and, you know, build houses for, unaffordable houses for people. And I can tell you, this has already happened at Higgins Beach, which we happen to have 5,000 square foot lots. And I can't imagine four units on a 5,000, you know, on my property. I mean, my house is, I, I think I've got about a footprint of maybe 1,200 square feet. So, if you divide that by four, you have tiny houses. And I think you're spot-on that, that, well, the other thing that's going on at the beach, and I'm not, people have the right to do this, so I'm not criticizing it, but people are building, taking one 5,000 square foot lot, building humongous primary homes that the Higgins Beach character code allows it, relaxed, all setbacks. People can build three feet up to a property line now, but they're also building what I would call a full-size cottage in their backyard. So, we're all on top of each other, and it's getting more so. But this is not affordable housing. This is, this is investment property. So, I think you're spot-on with what you were saying. The other thing, it was reminiscent to me, what we're talking about with 75 square, you know, 7,500 square foot lots, you know, the, the productive, is that you called it, housing? This is post-World War II Levittown. You know, this is what happened after World War II. I grew up in a subdivision that were all these little Cape Cod houses that were identical. And, and my mother was a single school teacher. So, this was, is what people could afford. And this was in West Hartford, Connecticut, which is not unlike Scarborough, that, you know, that there are more affluent areas in town, but there were also places where people, like, you know, divorced schoolteachers could buy a house and raise a family. So, I, I think that there's a place for it, but I also think, as, as Councilor Fellow said, as with one size does not fit all with the town of Scarborough, one size does not fit all in the state of Maine. And I think what the state has, has done, and, you know, is going to harm us. Just quickly, the other thing I wanted to add is about the workshops, workshops themselves. And I know we've had two workshops, and we tend to check the box about public engagement when we have workshops, but a workshop is really not public engagement. So, before goals are set and what direction the town is looking to take with all of this, I would encourage a open dialogue workshop where people can really be part of this discussion before goals are set and decisions are made. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve Zamorowski, 19 Teresa Massey Lane, out in the Buxton-Saco corner of town. I want to thank the council, and Autumn, of course, you're awesome. I'm leaving if you're leaving, so I'm sticking around. You know, I, I've been, I'm on the, the land board and the Housing Alliance, and yes, I think those things can coexist, and I think that's important. I've been reading the 2005, 2001 housing study that we did, and then the 2005 Comprehensive Plan, and I think we've done a good job doing what we said we'd do. Back in 2005, we said, and I'm paraphrasing, making this up maybe, but our kids, our grandkids, our teachers, our police officers can't live in town, maybe we can't even live in town, so we need to build more housing for our people. Sounds like a good thing. It sounds like what Maine is doing right now. We're here five or six years later, and a lot of the families didn't get to participate in that growth because, as this gentleman said, our wages, the, the economic forces at play, construction costs, all kinds of perfect storms have come together. And so, I think a lot of the problem with the growth of the feeling, the bad feeling we feel about the growth in town is that our people have not been able to participate, really, except on the downside of that growth. So, I think this is an opportunity now, and I applaud your work on this new legislation and everything you've done. The list is good, it's long, so I want to put my two cents in for priorities. My number-one priority is the short-term rental thing. It's, it's a disaster. It's going to be more of a disaster when people can, a developer or a, a host company can go knock on somebody's door and say, "I'm going to build three houses in your backyard, and it's going to be a business for you." That's going to be a nightmare. So, I think we should limit, restrict, maybe severely limit any non-owner short-term rentals, and really try to figure out what can be worked out through the people at the beaching areas, because I know that's part of the culture there, so we can work that out. The other thing is, we talked about affordable housing. We, we've had lots of development in Scarborough, but not affordable. And I think we have, I don't know, that's one thing about not knowing a lot, I don't have to, I'm not encumbered by anything. I think we can say, we can really, I think the LD 1829 is a draconian law, so we should be draconian. We should look at inclusionary zoning that says 50% of your housing needs to be affordable, 25% at the 80% level, and 25% at the 80 to 120, 120%, which is, they call that workforce housing. And if we did that, it might slow the growth. If we did that, we would have houses for our people. And, sorry, Tom, get away, get rid of the payment in lieu of fee, because that just lets the people pay off, pay their way out and get out the door. If we want housing, we need to make them build housing. If they can't build housing, then they shouldn't be building housing in Scarborough. And if they want to help, we'll find something to help partner with them to build that affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Hamel, Bay Street in Pine Point. I want to talk about both the short-term rental and kind of the, the workshop we just had. I fully endorse this idea that short-term rentals do not belong in our regular residential areas. Yes, beaches, we've always had them, although they've, the nature of the rentals have changed, have really changed from families taking a month to, you know, weekend or three-day rentals and one-week rentals that, and crazy parties and party houses. It's just, it's different. But we've always had them, so I'm not really saying that we need to change it, but they don't belong. And I live in Pine Point, and going up the Pine Point Road, some of those side streets, now more than ever, they're, they're becoming short-term rentals. I, getting to the, the, the growth, 1829, it doesn't just affect the growth areas, it affects all of the areas on this side of the turnpike. And if you just take a look down the Pine Point Road, down the Black Point Road, Pleasant Hill Road, I know on Pine Point Road, there is so much real estate owned by one or two families, or, and I mean, we're talking big tracts of land that are not on the water, that are on both sides of the Pine Point Road. Take Bailey's campground and the entire Bailey family, and you go down the Ross Road and you see just the opportunity to build and to fill those lots, all those lots in, is, it's going to be really crazy. But lots of those areas don't have sewer. So, how does that work? They have water, but not sewer. And shouldn't they have sewer because they are kind of close to the marsh? So, I think that protecting our marsh needs to be a high priority, and we need to figure out ways to get the sewer down Seavey Landing Road, get the sewer down Ocean View Road. Those areas, there is a lot of new development on, down toward the water, and still no sewer. Second thing, tiny houses. The Downs built eight tiny houses. They all sold for $325 immediately. Only one of those houses has a homestead exemption. So, I know at least two of them are short-term rentals. The other ones are maybe second homes or investor-owned. So, that, I mean, we need to figure out a way to incentivize, incentivize having people buy them and actually live in them. We don't want them to all become, you know, second homes. Third thing, where the heck, where's Ann Carney and Kelly Noonan and Sophie and Stacy? Let's get those guys in here. Come on, they live in Scarborough, they, they represent Scarborough, and they need to know how we feel about this. So, this council, I totally agree, the council needs to authorize, you know, Tom Hall and, or do a declaration, we don't, that we are not in favor of 1829. The next thing is transportation. We know that a lot of the traffic on Route 1 is people coming from Saco toward Portland. Let's get the tolls off the turnpike. Come on, you could reduce the traffic probably in half. All those people, they don't get on the turnpike because they don't want to pay whatever it is, a dollar. We know that that is true. Why can't we take a position on that and really try to push for that? Then the, the thing about the, the inclusionary zoning. Portland has a $182,000 per unit inclusionary zoning rule. And as a result of that, if the developer decides that they don't, they just want to pay, I mean, basically, there's been no development in, in Portland for the last couple of years. Projects have been approved, but nothing is getting started. So, that certainly, I'm not saying that's what we should do, but that, that has a big effect. I guess that's it. These were just crazy, yeah, so much material is covered, and, anyway, thanks.
To be continued.
Denise Hamilton, 2 Rod Road. I want to speak on three issues that all come down to accountability and process. I did have comments for the growth, but that'll have to happen at another time. First, regarding our roads. Under the town charter, councilors serve as municipal officers responsible for oversight of all town operations, including infrastructure maintenance. When a councillor suggests there should be no future repairs or maintenance on a public road like Sawyer Street, it raises concern because it conflicts with the duty to maintain town infrastructure. The councillor stated that it would be fiscally irresponsible to put money into a road which will eventually be taken by sea-level rise. Even with this rationale, does this position align with the councillor's obligation, the council's obligation to uphold and maintain public infrastructure? It's also disappointing that when taxpayers point out statute violations, we're brushed off as just giving opinions, yet when a lawyer says the same thing, it's suddenly taken seriously. Accountability shouldn't depend on who says it, but on what's right under the law. Accountability shouldn't depend on who says it, but on what's right under the law. Second, regarding Scotto Hill Road. First, thank you to councillors Anderson and Kane for offering thoughtful suggestions to address the conditions of Scotto Hill Road, whether through reallocating funds this year or ensuring that repairs are included in next year's budget. Their attention to this issue shows a commitment to maintaining essential infrastructure in this area. That said, there remains a serious concern regarding the status of Scotto Hill Road. If the town council never formally voted to permanently close the road or to authorize the MNRCP grant application through a public process tied to its removal, those actions would directly conflict with main law. Under Title 23 MRS Section 30, 3026, a municipality can discontinue a public way only after public notice, a hearing, and a formal vote by the legislative body. Similarly, Title 30-A MRS Section 5203 requires council approval before applying for or accepting a state or federal grant. Yet on August 27th, the Conservation Commission submitted a letter supporting the road's removal and urging that the MNRCP grant be awarded, despite no record of the town council authorizing either the application or closure. If those votes did not occur, these actions were taken outside proper legal authority and must be corrected. It feels like we're putting the cart before the horse, talking about funding options to fix a road while another arm of the town is advancing plans to remove it. In addition to the procedural and legal issues, closing Scotto Hill Road could have serious public safety consequences. Doing so would create significant delays for emergency services trying to reach homes on that road, forcing responders to detour all the way around to via Higas Parkway and back to Scotto Hill. In an emergency, those extra minutes could mean difference between life and death. And third, about the Airbnb and short-term rental policy. By the town manager's own admission, it was written by his office with alleged guidance from legal counsel and never brought before the town council for, for approval. That's a clear violation of the Town Charter and the manager's defined role. Under 30-A MRS Section 2636, the town manager's authority covers administrative policies for staff, not creating or approving public policy that affects residents and property use. Those decisions belong to the council through a transparent and public process. A group of us are requesting that this policy be reversed and properly reviewed by the council immediately. All three of these issues point to the same core problem. Decisions being made outside the scope of authority defined by law in the Town Charter. The public's trust depends on transparency, accountability, and respect for proper process. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, anyone else who has general public comment on items not on the agenda? Anyone else online? Doesn't look like it. All right. Thank you very much for your comments. Moving on, the next item is approval of the minutes of the November 5th, 2025 regular town council meeting.
Still moving.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Item six, adjustments to the agenda. There are none. Item seven, pressures warrants, I have those in front of me, sign. And item number eight is the town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
Let's start with Scotto Hill Road, as was mentioned at the podium. I purposely made a point, I, I have lost track, but I can look back at the last three or four, if not five meetings, made this a point of my report for many reasons, not the least of which to make council aware and the public aware of what we're doing. And essentially, what we've been doing since, since day one is evaluating options. And we see it as our role to work these options to the point of a decision point. I've tried to be incredibly transparent in terms of what exploration we're undertaking. One of those areas is exploring the potential for a grant that would help actually remove the culvert and restore that, that area of the waterway. I'm not, we're not advocating that, but that's an option, and we'd like to be able to explain to you whether there are, there's funding associated with that option. Incidentally, today, there was a review committee that considered that application that is passing it on with a favorable recommendation. There's a final vote intended or expected sometime in January. Similarly, we're, we're very concerned about the impacts of where, where traffic goes on deciding existing streets and are doing some work to better understand those impacts, whether there's any additional infrastructure that may help alleviate or create additional alternative roadway paths. Again, we view that as an option. So I think I've been quite clear that, given some of the regulatory limitations in terms of what we can do, and the fact that we don't have funding readily available to make the repair, we're using this time, I think wisely, to understand what those options are. And I have full intentions of engaging the public. In my experience, it's good to have, to be able to explain those projects, to get feedback to what they are before this council makes that ultimate decision. So that's kind of where we are. So today, we, we did hear that the grant is moving forward. It has always been our practice, and I will have to educate myself on the state law. We, we do not routinely seek your permission to apply for grants. We do that fairly routinely, frankly. But acceptance is always something that comes to you, because very often, we're not successful, frankly. But it doesn't happen until you accept the funds. I will make it my business to understand if we need to change our practice in that regard. With respect to Sawyer Street, this is a matter the council has been taking up over the last, you know, several meetings or months. I just want to report back to the council and the public. Based on council's action and direction given to staff, I have communicated with my counterpart in Cape Elizabeth. We both agree that the current memorandum of understanding is null and void, given kind of where we are and what both councils have done. Cape Elizabeth has agreed to assume all costs incurred to date, and so there'll be no expense for us to, to bear at all. We do have some clarification that the grant in that instance cannot be modified into do marsh restoration. It's really, would have to be reapplied for, and at this point, we have no intention of doing so. The final piece is, this council asked me to see if we could have a conversation around who will assume costs of future repairs. I've started that conversation. As you might expect, that's a bit more difficult one. But there's receptivity to have that conversation, so I'll report my progress as we go forward. With respect to the school building project, just for my part, I have the occasion to meet a couple of times with my school colleagues just to understand the next steps and what roles we may play. I believe they're considering forming some sort of committee to assist in the next phase, which is the design development phase. And so that's a board of education matter that will be moving through their process. If they do choose that route, I suspect there'll be some invitation to have involvement by the town council. More specifically, I'm interested in what the funding requirements or needs might be in the near term. This design phase will take the better part of the next year or so. But there will be certainly funds that need to be expended, all of which were considered as part of the approval granted by the voters. Is near as we can tell, it's about a four and a half billion dollar need over the next 12 months or so between architectural, all sorts of specialty consulting firms to help inform the final bid. And so we'll be working through our finance department to make sure we have adequate funding to support that effort as we move forward. And this was always envisioned to bond probably three, if not four, times over the course of this to make sure that we're, again, have cash in hand and available to support this project that was approved by the voters. Pleased to mention that council authorized some funding in this year's budget for budget software. Norman and his team have gone through an exhaustive process. We've identified a company, Gravity is the name. And our hope and intent would be to use that product for the FY '27 budget. As I look at the calendar and appreciate some of the training required, it will be tight likely, but our intent would be to bring that on, and I think you'll be pleased with the product. It really does seem to streamline a lot of the workflows on the inside, but I think it produces a really robust product for, for the residents as well. The Peterson Field Lighting Project, this is another project funded through the current budget. We've worked very closely with the Scarborough Little League. Have gone out to bid and have awarded a bid at this point. There are some extra funds beyond what was authorized by this council and what the Little League intended. I did enter into a memorandum of understanding with them that had them assuming all of those additional expenses. And it's my understanding they're undertaking a fundraising effort to raise the additional funds. At this point, we fully expect that this field will be operational for play in this upcoming season. Between now and then, however, they do need to submit an advisory opinion for the planning board, so that application is in process. And a neighborhood meeting is set up for December 11th at the Public Safety Building. There'll be notices going out to butters within 500 feet of the field. We'll also do, use our social media to get the word wider, if you will. The intent with that is obviously to, to make the neighbors aware of the project, to receive feedback before we're actually making submission to the planning board. The Route One Resiliency Project, this is a DOT project. This is essentially raising Route One for the expanse across the marsh. And as you may recall, essentially, they're looking at raising that road section four to five feet across the marsh, and then at the, the river crossings, the culverts will be replaced with more of a traditional bridge span. As you might, one of the challenges with this is that it's a very sensitive area on either side of this road. DOT, for obvious reasons, doesn't want to, and the regulatory agencies, I don't think will let them expand that footprint wider, so we are, and they are limited with working with a defined real estate. Thinking about some of the recommendations from the transportation plan that we just completed, an enhancement of bike pedestrian facilities, our position has been, we want to make sure that bike pad is provided for. Frankly, if we don't get it now, we'll never get it. Again, that takes away from some of the valuable real estate, and then when you factor in, you know, safety separation, breakdown lanes, travel lanes. It's a long-winded way of saying that, you know, DOT is actively looking at what that road section looks like in terms of number of lanes in which directions. And we want to make sure that there's a public process associated with that, because it's going to change from the traditional two lanes in both directions to something else. And we're still not exactly sure how that falls together. So we'll work with our partners at DOT, and our position is to allow some level of public process and awareness of what they're thinking. Bear with me. As was alluded to earlier, with great success from our perspective, council afforded us a chance, a workshop with you before you set your goals. That was with senior staff. We'd very much like, like that opportunity to count, so I'll work with council leadership to see if we can do something, presumably in the month of December for that session. That's really helpful for us, and hopefully you'll honor that request. The Scarborough Land Trust has refreshed a request to the town. It languished on my desk, and I asked the Land Trust to renew it. Essentially, there are 10 town-owned properties that they have are requesting that be deeded over to them and for permanent conservation. I believe all of these lands already have that expectation, yet they don't necessarily have a deed restriction for conservation. We've done something similar to this in the past. I will be following the council's policy on real estate disposition, which requires me to notice several folks on my staff, but also external folks as well of this request and the intent to, for the town to divest interest. And the point of that is to collect input, all of which will be consolidated, provided to you, and it's obviously up to you whether you want to pursue this. So that will probably be a 60 to 90-day process, collecting all of that information, but I want to make you aware that that, that is underway. I see Stannis Moody Roberts in the audience. Thank you, Stannis, for reminding me. Forgive me for referring it to the, as the Gorm Connector, because I don't know what else to call it. But that whole effort was stopped. There is an interest and, and kind of breathing life back into understanding how we're going to deal with it, because the problem has not gone away. And so DOT is, is going to be driving this next iteration of the, of the planning work. And I've been advised with the commissioner of DOT himself that we'll be re-engaging in the next month or so. And I, I know that's a point of great interest for the council and for many of our residents, so I'll, I'll make you aware as that starts to get back up to speed. It's bittersweet for me to advise that our town assessor, Nick Cludier, has been named just last evening, actually, the city manager for City Waterville. Nick has been with us or would have been with us about six years. And frankly, when I hired him, his commitment, I said, "You, you just need to get me through the revale," and he honored that and, and did an extremely admirable job, many of which, many of you were, were witnesses to that effort. So I certainly wish him well. It's, it's a bit of, it's a bit of pride on my part, just having staff capable enough to, in their particular disciplines, but be able to take the next step, so that's the bittersweet part of it. We have already initiated the recruitment process to find a successor. He's made great inroads in the assessing community, so I'm hopeful that he's going to encourage some folks that he knows, and so I'll continue to make you aware of that as we go forward. In the meantime, we have Sue Russo, who's been with the town over 20 years as deputy assessor, extremely capable, has had the opportunity to have, have the job seven times now, has never, I think wisely said no. So we're in very capable hands in the meantime. Last things, I promise, housekeeping. Sparkle in the park, we used to call it Sand on the Park. We've rebranded slightly. I think in large part because we are doing some enhanced additional lighting this year in the municipal campus and in Memorial Park. That will be held on December 5th, 5 to 7. Of course, Santa will be there. There'll be all sorts of activities, music, fireworks, and the like. So very excited about that. And GP COG this year is again doing their welcome and congrats. It's really for duly-elected councillors. But I think all councillors are invited to come, so I think you all received an invitation. That's December 10th, USM, USM at the McGoldrick Center. If you don't know about it, want to attend, I'll certainly give you more information. And lastly, Scarborough Community Chamber is restarting their annual elected officials dinner. This is really just an appreciation for town council and Board of Education for your public service. And that will be held at Scarborough Terrace, December 15th. And they are looking for a headcount, so if you're interested and available, make me aware, and I'll certainly pass that on to them. So thank you for your patience as I went through that.
Next up, a lot of material there. Item nine, standing and special committee reports and liaison reports.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Usually, we do questions for Tom. If there are questions for his update, would you mind if we ask some questions?
Not at all.
Great.
Good catch.
Not a good way.
I just wonder if there's a list someplace of the temp properties that we're considering?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll share that. I've got a very comprehensive letter of request that includes maps and the like.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just as a, as a follow, any more questions? As a follow-up to that, were these properties requested specifically by the Land Trust, or?
Yes.
Okay. How do we open this up to, or is it appropriate to open it up to other organizations that may want those properties as well? Like if the farm, depending on what they are, like, how last week, we, or last time we voted on a farm-based property, I'm just curious, like, are we making this open to other organizations?
I'll have to check. My, my recollection is they, most of them have come to us by way of subdivision approval and their excess land, or, again, they may not have a, an actual conservation deed that restricts them, but they are open space. In most cases, they are not developable, frankly. So I, I can't say that exclusively. I'll provide that list, but I suppose anyone could ask at any time if the town could deed property to them.
Yeah.
But the Land Trust has advanced this upon their own initiative.
And just a question on Scotto Hill, and maybe this is a request for the chair and the vice chair. It would, it would be helpful to understand, maybe at our next meeting, when the council may have a discussion on which option we want to choose based on the work that staff needs to do. I think it would be helpful for the public to know, like, when we project, we will know when we will be making a decision, and I presume that's before March 31st, when we usually get our budget request. Because I'm assuming either it's going to show up in some form or fashion in there, or we'll need to, we'll need to have that discussion as part of the budget process of, if there's going to be a CIP specifically for this project, we would want that in there. So I would just appreciate, you know, when that decision point is, so that the public can be aware. And I can just also attest that, and I don't know if it's, like, to your point, Tom, I appreciate you. And I can just also attest that, and I don't know if it's, like, to your point, Tom, I appreciate you looking into the law again to confirm our practices around grants is appropriate. My experience on the council for the past five years has been they only come when the grants are to be awarded. I can only think of one exception where we didn't do that, which was when we were applying for the grant for Payne Road. And that was deliberate because of the dollar value that we were going out with. And I think it was at staff's recommendation that we put that on the agenda for visibility before we moved that forward. So, right. And I think it was really because that dollar value at the time was so big. Um, so that's the only time I can recall where we actually had a discussion on, do we want to move a grant forward? Because also at the time, we were going after the um Route One Grant. And so they were kind of competing grants, and we wanted to make sure that the council had the opportunity to really weigh those too. So just a a point of information.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Tom? Larry?
Hi, just a couple of quick things, Tom, in relation to Sawyer Road. Um, I think when we were talking about originally was also pursuing a weight limit on that road. And you indicated that uh Cape Elizabeth was willing to discuss that. And and I just want to again push that uh forward if we can. I think that's certainly as we resist um excessive maintenance on that road, past what standard to keep it safe. That um, that weight limit may extend the life of the road.
Yes, thank you for reminding me, yes. Um, yeah, Cape Elizabeth is is fully in favor. We haven't talked specifics, but obviously we need their cooperation to to do that across the stretch of the marsh.
Great, thank you. Scott?
Yeah, on the 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 roads, I mean, the public has made it very clear and it's pretty obvious. I mean, we have roads that are existing. If anything, we need more roads, wider, talk about Route One and stuff. Um, so the Scotto Hill Road, uh, it's limited when we can, they can do the work. Because it can't be done in the summer, has to be done in the winter or fall because of the marsh and whatever. Um, so hesitating on this and saying, let's check into seeing about getting a grant to discontinue it. I don't think we should be doing it at all with any road. Uh, you know, I I think we should have been, we should get right on top of it. And we should have somebody there now, because it's the time you can work on it and fix on the culvert. And doing whatever we have to do with the budget to accommodate that. Uh, you know, I mean, we're talking about, uh, you know, community centers and brand-new buildings in town, you know, public buildings and stuff, but we don't have the money to put a cover in. I mean, that's just, that's unacceptable. Uh, infrastructure, the roads, most important thing in town. I mean, I'm, but I'm a big advocate about getting, you know, spending. But when it comes to roads now, I mean, we we have to, they have to be fixed, they have to be taken care of. So I think we should move on this quick and get that cover fixed. And we, as a council, should, in the next meeting, I think we should have it on the agenda to vote to uh approve funding to do that, whatever way we need means necessary.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks for that procedural catch, Councilor Anderson. Um, now, item number nine, standing in special committee reports and liaison reports. Um, Councilor Donovan, anything from you? Okay. Ms. Anderson? Larry?
Yes.
For uh Communications, I want to plug our uh Cake With Counselors program. Uh, we've talked about this the last couple of meetings, but we've got, I believe, seven dates set um to be out in the public locally. Uh, a variety of us at each meeting um to really interact and talk with the public and uh get in a much less formal setting, get feedback and and uh top issues that are concerns. And we're particularly trying to do one of these in every neighborhood of town as well. Um, so that is kicking off. There's two tomorrow. Um, one is at um noon, I think. Um, that is specific to the Link Business Network um group. Um, and so that was a push for me to also be in uh involving the business community in getting their opinions on uh top issues in town. So we're really excited to get that going.
Thank you, Scott. As I think was mentioned last time, this is a sort of a quiet time of the year for committee activity. And we will be working now that the council's seated. And we have leadership uh in place will be of the next, in the coming weeks, um, sort of figuring out who's going to be on what committees. And we'll be digging in. We obviously have plenty to do a across a lot of different priorities. Um, I have a few quick things. Um, Long Range Planning met this past Friday, the 14th. Uh, they continued their discussion of zoning districts in relation to the comprehensive plan goals. Um, this time with a focus on uses. Uh, the planning board met this past Monday, the 17th. Um, they held a public hearing um and had some discussion around the LD 427, which is kind of roughly speaking, companion state legislation to LD 1829 focused on parking. We actually have that on our agenda later this evening. Um, there um was also a site plan amendment discussion related to the the property um over at the old Public Safety Building site, which now houses Harbor Fish and Rosemont. Um, uh, I I think it's been common knowledge for a while, really since they opened. Um, the good news is they've been, they've they've been very popular. The bad news is that entrance with the sharp granite curbing has been problematic. And so the revised site plan um would um limit that and make that an entrance only. And they would remove sort of that center divider, which will, which will make uh make it easier for cars to get in and out of there, really to get in there strictly speaking. Um, and vehicles will have to exit off of the the two side streets. So um, there's some discussion on that. Um, and both bodies, Long Range Planning and Planning Board, will obviously, you know, to what Autumn's presentation and the discussion earlier this evening are going to be busy. In addition to their regular business and site plan review and other things that come up. Um, going to have their hands full with um ordinance amendment reviews associated with the state legislation. Um, on, this is a little, little bit of a one-off, but on Saturday, I had the opportunity to participate in Metro's um one of Metro's workshops, which was held in Public Safety Building, related to their um pilot service that's going to be coming in, hopefully implemented by spring or summer of 2026 with service, dedicated service uh up and down Route One. At this point, the Southern Terminus would be at the Downs. But there was some discussion about um, you know, what what people are looking for and what what would be considered a success. And how the service might grow over time if it turns out that the demand is there and that the pilot project is successful. Um, so I think that was an important discussion. We talk a lot about um a lot of different things related to growth management. And one of those is um handling our traffic in town. And it does seem that there is some latent demand for for some, some form of public transit. So that was an interesting um exercise. So that wraps up our um, our reports, and we'll certainly have more to report going forward. Um, we do not have any resolutions or proclamations this evening. So moving on to order number 25 dash 108. It's a 7:00 PM public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendments to Chapter 405, the zoning ordinance, Section 11 Off-Street Parking Regulations. And Section 5, Board of Appeals to amend parking requirements for residential uses and amend off-site parking requirements in accordance with LD 427. Um, we'll continue to lean on you, Autumn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and congratulations um to you and to Councilor Kane. Um, so this is our second reading and our public hearing for, we talked about this a bit in the growth workshop. This is LD 427, which essentially limits the amount of parking that we can require for residential units down to one. Uh, we also are making a change to our Board of Appeals' ability to reduce parking. It coincides with an ability that the planning board currently has as well through the site plan process. And it seems more appropriate to keep it with that process. And then it also amends the shared use parking, um, the distance that can be um utilized for that sort of situation. So with that, the planning board did hold a public hearing on Monday about this. Um, they were in favor with this change. They did want to bring up the opportunity to address maximum parking. Maximum parking has been something that's come up more on the commercial side. Um, I would say we have a a minimum parking requirement, but often we get maximums. And so those maximums might serve that business two or three days of the year. And so Planning Board wanted to just reiterate that there is certainly still a desire to address the the maximums for commercials specifically. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Autumn. Before we open it up for public comment, are there any clarifying questions for staff? Okay, we do have the opportunity for public comment on this item. Um, just coming up and identify yourself in three minutes.
Sue Hamel, Bay Street in Pine Point. Um, I do think that uh I did, I watched the planning board meeting uh Monday. And um, the the parking, with all of the increased development, parking is going to become more of a problem. And I mean, it's already a problem, I'm sure, at Higgins Beach. It certainly is at Pine Point in the summertime. Um, and that the town is going to have to start thinking about overnight parking on public streets. And I mean, we just, we have to, we are, you know, like Portland, most, even Old Orchard has overnight parking on public streets. And as well, Old Orchard opens up a couple of, um, you you can get a permit um to park overnight in some of their public lots. And um, and that's really important in the summertime when you have um, you know, the dense density of the housing. And you have people who are not there September through June. But now July and August, they're here and they've got, you know, four cars. And um, and they, so to accommodate that, um, Old Orchard has been, you know, kind of friendly to their residents and allows overnight parking and allows uh permits that you you can get. And I just think that it's the reality, um, when you're not providing enough parking for the houses that are being, or apartments that are that are being built. And, you know, when you suddenly have ADUs um in your backyard, where does everybody park? And um, it is a problem. So I do hope that um, the council thinks about that as a goal. Uh, it is a very complex issue. And Pine Point, lots of people, lots of residents park on the street. And those spaces will all be taken up um when they go to, you know, put their cars on the street to provide parking for their guests. I mean, it's just, it's, it's going to be really, um, it's not an easy problem to solve. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. So turning back to the council, uh, now I'm going to turn to you, John, as a, as a little bit of a mentor here. Turn remember if we typically go straight to a motion and then, and then, then have a second and then we go into discussion, right?
Yep.
So, great. I would welcome a motion.
I, so moved.
All right, have a second. Council discussion. John?
I mean, we we, we have to support this to meet a legislative requirement, so there's not much we can do. But I really appreciated the comment that, as we think about growth and parking, not to add a number 13 or 14 to the list, but it's definitely a
That'd be 15.
Yeah, that'd be 15, actually, yeah. It's it's a good point that we do need to think more strategically about parking in town. So I think that's a worthy thing for us to consider as part of this whole growth conversation.
Michelle?
Do we have ancillary parking in town now? I I'm just thinking about, um, you know, I'll throw the Downs out there. I'm not sure what their parking um situation is, but I know one of my son's friends moved into a two-bedroom and there's three people living in and they have three cars. Um, so I think there are a lot of situations like that. So how are we handling that currently? And then to Sue's point, if we end up with, you know, say, triple the amount of people and cars, you know, do we even have lots now that you could permit or that we do anything with? So like certain current status.
I I'm not aware that, we certainly don't have any dedicated lots that are, you know, designated overflow. But um, I think there are ones we could consider, certainly school properties, um, depending on time of year, of course. Um, uh, overnight, certainly at our beach areas potentially. Uh, but all of those present some challenges with clearing those cars out, so we can actually sell those spaces in the morning. But um, but not not currently.
I will say that that we do, um, we currently require more than the one space, obviously, per residential unit. And what we typically see is that there are spaces provided for guest parking and extra parking. In the Downs, for instance, they have actually permitted a satellite parking lot. And they're going to be handling a lot of EV charging in that lot as well for just some of the commercial development that is occurring. Um, so we do, we're starting to see that. But this particular situation, you know, at at the beach and not allowing overnight parking for those smaller lots, it really is going to be important to consider allocating parking central in the central locations or to really talk with development developers about where they, where they put that, so that it can be accessed. Um, the, the legislation was really designed for what I believe are communities with parking garages and facilities, right? So that you could easily walk that quarter of a mile in a very urban setting. You park your car and you walk. And we, we don't have that luxury, so we're going to try to work our way into it sort of backwards.
Any other council comments? Scott?
Yeah, just quick, it 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 does seem like the, you know, the easiest solution is to allow them to park on the street. You know, that may be what we have to, you know, because we never have in Scarborough. In the wintertime, obviously, it's going to be a problem, but you have uh, like Paul and, you know, you, you can't park on the street during the snowstorm. So now as you get towed, so we get that problem to deal with. So, uh, but that does seem like the easiest. I mean, I can't imagine somebody, you know, being down Black Point Road or Pine Point Road and having somebody give them a ride up to the school parking lot to park their car and then driving all the way back down there. I I don't think anybody would do it. I don't think they, you know, they'd park it on the lawn or stuff it somewhere. I don't know. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Um, yeah, I, like, uh, Councilor Anderson said, this is compliance with state law. I mean, it's on a more accelerated timeline than LD 1829. Um, and doesn't seem like something that we can necessarily push back on. But I do appreciate the discussion and some of the thoughts around things that we might be able to do around the margins to to mitigate the impact. And I appreciate the discussion that Autumn helped facilitate with the planning board the other night on this as well. They definitely did not take it as sort of a rubber stamp type thing. So I do appreciate that thoughtful approach. Um, so with that, if there are no further comments, I will call the vote. All in favor? So that's be unanimous. Thank you. Order number 25 dash 109, 7:00 PM public hearing and second reading on the recommendation to Town Council for the zoning change request for tax map U 002 Lot 164, being an approximately 0.32 acre parcel located at 71 Greenwood Avenue, currently zoned Higgins Beach Character Base Zoning District, CR1, to Residential 3 R3. And back to Autumn.
Thank you. You all considered this on first reading on November 5th. The planning board did hold a public hearing and at their October meeting. This is a zoning request that comes to us from the applicant to address um the character code and the zoning. This particular home is a log cabin just at the outskirts of the Higgins Beach character code. They were previously R3 and they are requesting to go back to R3. The uses don't change, but the setbacks do differ. And that would enable them to do an expansion to the rear of their house versus the side of the house. And I believe that the applicant is on Zoom patiently waiting. Um, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have of me.
Thank you. Um, is there any public comment on this item, either in person or online? All right, assume our applicant is just listening in. Thank you. Uh, back to the council, do we have a motion?
So moved.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Our last action item, uh, order number 25 dash 114, 7:00 PM public hearing and action on the new request for a mobile food vendor license from Christopher McDonald doing business as Mac Daddy's Mobile Cuisine LLC.
This is a new license, um, that's coming forward. It's been reviewed by all departments and founding compliance.
Thank you. Uh, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none? We have a motion.
So moved.
Any discussion? I'm just glad after all this, tonight I got to say Mac Daddy's.
I just wondered, should we be sampling the item?
Yes.
Yeah. We're going to see a coalition. See a coalition building here. All right, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Um old business, none at this time. We have no new business either. No non-action items. Uh there any council comments? Counselor Anderson?
Yep, um first, I want to welcome Michelle. I'm super forward to having, are looking forward to having you on the council and bringing your perspective um to the work that we do together, and. Congratulations to Karen for getting reelected and being on here for another three years. It takes someone special. To do this one time and then to want to come back again, so thank you for for stepping up and coming back. I also want to congratulate Corey and Larry for their role as chair and vice chair. I think it's um super great to have you guys in the roles, and I I really trust. In both of your leadership and judgment as you you work through the next year. I love Scott and Bill too, since I'm saying thank you to everybody, so thank you guys. But um I also want to just acknowledge Tom. Uh. You know, Tom, you you tend to take a lot of heat a lot of times from the public. And I just really appreciate the fact that. You show up every day and come to do what's best for our community, and after working with you for five years, I know. That's what guides you and the choices and the things that you do. Um we're always clapping for your your staff, Autumn, Angela, Nick, and I think that's honestly a reflection of you. And so despite um some of the feedback, which I know you take and I know you work on, um which I also appreciate. I just am uh, you know, super pleased to be sitting next to you today and super pleased to have you as as our town manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselor comments? Counselor Donovan?
Yeah, the uh. Comments about uh. Autumn's presentation and uh and that old. Legislature has, in some people's view, overstepped. Uh and Home Rule took a beating in that. I would be interested to know if our feelings are shared. By other towns that are similarly situated to us, our neighbors. And whether and because I respect Tom's authority and responsibility to direct that. Whether it was through Autumn or himself, that would be up to him, but I think we could learn something. Whether we're an outlier in our viewpoint, or whether these other communities really would like to share the same perspective that we have.
So. Thank you. Any other counselor comments? Counselor Kane?
Uh I'll just make a quick push for a few of us today visited the middle school for to participate in um a little. Project that the civics class is doing, eighth grade civics class, and they're. Competing in a statewide civics bee, like a spelling bee, um where they develop a topic for what they think could be improved. In their town or the state and and um. It's an essay contest to start with that they submit, and I. Went into this class not kind of knowing how far along they would be or what they were had actually accomplished. But I was wildly surprised at the sophistication and thoughtfulness of the topics they had chosen. It was. It was everything from preserving the marsh to um. Developing uh transportation for um public transportation for uh elderly people and uh and we were able to talk about the Metro Pilot Project. So it was just, it was a wonderful experience, kind of good renewal of uh the enthusiasm and excitement for uh Scarborough youth.
Great. Anything else? Anyone else?
I have one more comment.
All out.
Autumn Spear for Governor twenty twenty six.
Crazy town.
I hope it's in the Portland Press Herald.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll that'll be that'll be on the eleven o'clock news, I'm sure. Yeah. Just a couple of comments for me. Um first of all, I'm I'm honored to be to be the chair. I look forward to working with Counselor Kane and the rest of the the rest of the the council moving forward. You know, I said it before, but it's just, you know, it's it's one vote. There's an opportunity to kind of shepherd some of the conversation and. Set the agenda to an extent, but I intend to do that um, you know, in a collaborative consensus building way. And I think, you know, I'm really, I I really, I uh am um. At least cautiously optimistic based on the outcome of the school vote a couple of weeks ago. We hear so much, and there's sort of this narrative that the town's very divided and people are very upset. And I know that people do have a lot of concerns about things like growth and traffic, but I think to have that sort of a vote. Uh that really just based on the, just based on the on the raw math clearly transcended. Some of those, some of those differences uh was really an indication that. You know, we are capable of doing hard things, and that was a long process. It didn't just happen out of nowhere. It really was the result of a lot of. Lot of hard work and conversations, some of which um, you know, were were participated in by people in this room. So really looking forward to moving for moving forward and tackling these things. Um I I also will. Just add to what Counselor Kane said about this morning's uh session with the middle schoolers. It's really inspiring. Um I had conversations with people about. Proposals around financial literacy curriculum in the schools to distracted driving um regulations and was really impressed with. Their level of preparedness and just commitment to it, so that was that was pretty cool. With that, if there are no other comments? Counselor Doherty?
Thing that I thought of earlier and I didn't bring out, the people that were speaking, every single one of them went to red. But our new chairman didn't shut them off, shut them down, that says, you know, I think you did great to let them go. They were in a run, and you let them go their ways and just let it go, so I think that's good news to you.
I appreciate that. I know from from being chair and in other capacities in the past and watching other people do it, that's. It's not easy, and there's a fine line there. We want to be respectful of everyone's time, including everyone at this table. But it's, yeah, a little bit of a judgment call sometimes, so I I do appreciate that. Um I did, I do want to welcome Counselor Hayes and um. Enjoyed our conversation and look forward to working with you, and welcome back Counselor Shoup. And um we've got a lot of work to do, and we'll be forming those committees and setting our goals and meeting with staff, and. Looking forward to working with the town manager and his great staff and. Moving into the new year, so um if everyone has a good Thanksgiving, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There you go. Any discussion? All in favor?
Sure.
Thank you.